Are we ready to rock and roll?
Really?
As David would say.
I just, I can yell that at home if I don't.
Anyway, you're not missing anything being down there. No. Showers are minimal. It's hot and ugly and they're in the mud. So that's not why I want to be on.
All right. I thought about it. The last time I. Really? And at the very end, after everybody had done, she said, well, yes, that's.
I don't know what I'm eating, but.
You have me go in and be the other player with. I feel like we should have everybody give their name, but he never actually asked me. Wasn't even looking. Happens to see. That's my community.
To see you.
We ready, Rob? Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. And welcome. It's six thirty-five. Peter Bearden, the Chair of the Acornia Planning Board. And we'll call the meeting to order. I will note for the record, this meeting will be held in person in our noticed meeting room. In conformance with New Hampshire RSA ninety-one A, the right to know law forum of the board's members must be physically present in the meeting room for the meeting to start and or continue. While there is a physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, the meeting is also being conducted electronically. So the public can choose to attend and participate in person or by Zoom. However, if something occurs that disables access to Zoom, the meeting will continue regardless. And members of the public or board members using Zoom will have no recourse. Choosing to use Zoom is done at the individual's risk. Using Zoom requires the use of an enabled device. To participate on Zoom, the webinar ID is eight four three one seven five four six three nine seven. That's eight four three one seven five four six three nine seven. To listen only, you can call one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Again, that's just to listen. One six four six five five eight eight six five six. Okay. Could we have a call of the roll, please?
Scott McLean.
President.
Bruce Chaney.
Here.
Charlie Sinclair.
Here.
Kirk Biati.
Here.
Rich McNeil.
Here.
Stacy Soucy.
Yeah.
Susan Hodgkins.
Here.
Brett Belover.
Present.
Peter Burnett.
Present. Okay, and we do have a quorum and is Scott an alternate or full member? So they could both be seated then, couldn't they? Or?
For now until Mike arrives.
Till Mike's, Mike arrives, you're both seated and then when Mike arrives. Why don't we say Scott will sit out and Susan will sit in. How's that? The next time we'll go back and forth. It's very encouraging to have alternates, let me tell you. And to have you both here is very much appreciated. It's also a good thing now that we're back doing live meetings because I don't know how the staff dealt with that attendance issue. The Recording Secretary, of course, Kalina Graham. Staff in attendance, we have Dean Trufethan, the Planning Director, and Rob Mora, who's the Senior Planner. Have you all received copies of the minutes from the August third meeting? If so, are there any suggestions as to changes to those? Sensing none, then I will declare the minutes accepted from the August third meeting. I guess we're starting up with is a presentation. Let's see. Presentation of proposal to allow indoor storage in the CR zone. This was continued from July. And I'm not sure who's doing the presentation. Dean is, okay. Him, I know. You know, you look much better on TV.
Oh, I'm not ten pounds heavier. We got two cameras on me, you know, so I might be twenty pounds heavier. Yeah, zoom effect. We're passing, hand around a double-sided handout here to you for this presentation on indoor storage in the CR district. Currently indoor self-storage is not permitted in the CR district self-storage. It would be the kind of thing where a person can go in and out of the facility essentially at their will and go in and out of their storage unit essentially at will as opposed to some of the boat storage places that are allowed in the CR district where you would take your boat in the fall, they would store it for the winter and then you'd go pick it up in the spring. That is not considered self-storage. Permitted in CR district is the watercraft long-term storage, both indoor and outdoor and just plain old outdoor storage, which is whatever you want to store outdoors. We do have frequent requests from landowners to do the indoor self-storage. Indicates that there is a need. As I have mentioned to this board before, planning staff believes that the, we have a contradiction in in the table of uses right now in that we allow outdoor storage, which we feel is unsightly. But we don't allow indoor storage, which we feel it would be more desirable. Proposed is to make it a conditional use permit, which would require Planning Board review and approval. The proposal is to add a new section L to the two thirty-five dash forty-two non-residential uses be entitled indoor self-storage in CR district. We have number one, which basically states that it would be a conditional use permit with the sole discretion of the Planning Board. Number two, back pay, backside of the page would require a minimum frontage setback. Any structure proposed for indoor self-storage shall be set back from any public street a minimum of seventy-five feet. And then we outline design and performance standards. Planning Board shall not grant a conditional use permit for an indoor self-storage facility unless it finds such at your discretion, your power. Because it is that the indoor, that the applicant has provided adequate evidence that the development, if completed as proposed, will comply with the design and performance standards of this section. And these standards include the following requirements. The facility shall be adequately screened from any street or adjacent property. Notice I am not defining what that screening is. I'm going to carry that out with suggestions to any applicants to come in and then come to you as a board and say, yeah, we're comfortable with this. Or perhaps you're not comfortable with what they are proposing for screening. You may not feel that it is adequate. Structures shall be finished in neutral earth toned colors and shall be designed to look like traditional New England styled structures using sloped roofs and siding that looks like clapboard, shingles or other similar design elements. And the structure shall not exceed thirty-five feet in height, including roofs. The idea here is to not have the orange and black, I think it is U-Haul type, big box building with orange doors and et cetera, et cetera. That's the idea that we're, we don't want to have. So that's the proposal. The one through three ABC, if you wanted to proceed with this, would be the wording that would be the ordinance. This is what would be advertised. If you wanted to proceed with this, you would go to a plan, a public hearing at the next meeting. And this would be the language that would be published and made public for comments and for people to see. We also would obviously have to update the actual table of use chart to change the N to a C where come, where talks about indoor storage in the CR district. I think that's self-evident to this board. When we get to city council level, we would have to be a little more explicit, but that's, that would be the plan. So I'm available for questions or comments.
The commercial resort district is the only district that we need to do this in. What about UC?
UC is already allowed with a conditional use, I believe.
You're in the commercial.
Sure, right. The, yup, downtown Union Ave, Court Street, et cetera. Quite frankly, this, the CR district is the, is the only district that we're being asked about for people who are coming in and and asking for this type of thing. Apparently they want to be, there's, there's two factors here. There's, there's the boat issue and they want to be close to the customers. And then there's the condominium owner situation where they have toys or seasonal items that they have no place to store in their various condominiums. As you know, over the past fifteen or so years, we've had a number of cottage colonies and motels that have been converted to condominiums. For the most part, they have no storage and they have a couple of small closets and, but that's about it. So you've got your swimming gear and your tennis rackets and your whatever else you may have. There's no place to store them. So those are the, the two primary markets that we have heard from different property owners that have come in to talk to us, boats and personal items, which is why we believe it should be indoors.
Sure. Charlie and members.
Thank you. I have two questions, Dean. And I think I know the answer to the first one. If somebody's got their property and they're just putting boats on it, you know, to store boats and they take them off and then some will put them back, whatever. But if they put a building there, will the tax rate go up on that property with a storage building on it?
Oh, a structure would definitely be taxed at a higher rate than just
Okay.
plain old land that's been leveled out.
All right, in this, and I just want to, with, with this, and I don't think this CR thing was in effect at the time, but I remember when the property owner, I believe it was Mr. Mitchell, wanted to put storage units up there on Endicott Street North. Whereas now there's a big hill.
Yup.
And I understand, I haven't seen anything in writing, but I understand that property has either been sold or is under agreement. And I understand there's a plan to put forty-eight units there? Condos or something like that? That's what I understand. I'm not saying it's true. I just understand that.
We, we have talked with a couple of different people that have looked at that property and have talked to us about different proposals.
So I guess my, my point is that had we, or had Mr. Mitchell gone ahead and put storage there, be it for boats or just self-storage, so these people could put their tennis rackets and swim gear and stuff in it, that the city would probably not be able to realize as much potential tax revenue as they will now if this new project goes through with condominiums or something like that. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm thinking that those units would, would generate a lot more tax.
If, if given the choice between a residential development, i.e. condos or, or whatever, and a storage facility, yes, the, the residential development would have more value to the city from a tax-based standpoint. Of storage unit is, is definitely not highest and best possible use of, of some lands, it could very well be highest and best possible use for some properties. Particularly if you've got to move it seventy-five feet off the road or more to you, you then leave an area that could be developed for, whether it be retail or some type of commercial or the, the couple of the properties that, that have, that keep getting presented to us because they're on the market. One is far enough back that you would never see it and it doesn't have a lot of frontage on Endicott Street in this particular case. Anyway, a couple of other properties are a little more visible and, and, and even at seventy-five feet back, you might be able to, you, you would still see the buildings. But yes, you know, a doesn't have to be a high-end residential development. Any residential development would, would be more value than storage facility. But a storage facility is more value than a vacant piece of land.
Thank you.
Counselor Chaney?
I don't see anything in this proposal that would eliminate the water long-term storage or outdoor storage.
It would not, no. We will still have that. That would still be an option to, to property owners. And I think that we are probably going to see one proposal here fairly shortly for that exact kind of thing regardless. And that's if, if we were to approve this proposal, I guess that is something that we could look at as a secondary part of that and say, maybe we don't want to allow the, the outdoor storage in that zone anymore. But, you know.
Was a question.
Sure.
You define in A, the facility shall be adequately screened from any street or adjacent property. Can you suggest what a minimum of adequate is? I mean, I'd be less than honest, but in tell you, I drive down one oh six and see some of those that aren't screened admittedly. And they don't appear to me to largely increase the value of that land or surrounding land. And I worry that adequate may not be adequate.
Well, I think we're looking at a fence, probably, you know, a solid fence for sure. A, a six-foot fence probably blocks most of the vision for motorists driving by.
It depends on the terrain.
It does depend on the train. All right, if, if it's going up, it may not.
Thirty-five feet high.
Right. You know, a lot, and, and a lot of these, a lot of these places will only be one-story high because they're, obviously if you're dealing with boats and, or something like that, people don't want to deal with the second floor, but that's why you guys get paid the big bucks.
Oh.
Zero, I know.
I feel better.
Yeah, you haven't got paid, you haven't got your paycheck yet, Chris. For you to determine what, what is adequate. And I think that, you know, part, part of the answer to that is it's different for different properties. If, if the property slopes up, then maybe it's one thing. If it slopes down away from the road, maybe it's another thing.
My, my only argument would be it's, it's an area of contention, could be an area
Yup.
contention. We could find ourselves fighting over
Yup.
the definition of adequate.
Right. So, you know, can conditional use is, is, is discretionary to, to some degree by the board. It's, it's, instead of just saying it's permitted by right and here are the, you know, here are the rules that you got to follow. You know, the board could say, that's not what we want to do at this particular location.
So that's staff's recommendation that, that it be subject to CUP approval?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Dean on this issue? So it's the decision that we need to make is whether or not the schedule of public hearing on this zone, zoning ordinance modification, right? Amendment.
You, you could you, you have I think you have three options. The first option would be you decide immediately that you don't want to pursue this and you, you vote. We're done. The second option is to table again for further consideration and I would like a little direction on what that further consideration might be. And the third option would be to schedule it for a public hearing at reasonable expectation would be the next meeting.
It seems to me that, that we could have, it'd be better if we had this discussion about the fine tuning of the language with public input rather than without it. So.
Yeah, and after the public hearing, you, you, you still have those three options. You still have the option of saying no, you have the option of making, tabling and making changes and.
Making changes, right, exactly. But we got to get it out there and get it noticed, you know what I mean? So that the public has an opportunity.
That, that's.
To weigh in on it.
If that's the board decision, yes.
Yeah.
If it's not voted down before that.
If it's what?
If it's not voted down before that, we may not need a public hearing. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but if the board decided, we just didn't want to go any further, that would be the end of that, correct? Or am I wrong in that?
Well, if we, if we voted tonight to schedule a public hearing, then a public hearing would be scheduled.
I understand that. I was just saying, if we voted not to go any further tonight.
Oh, right. It could still come back.
Of course.
Right.
Well, we could table it.
Because this, because of the problem that he's trying to address isn't going to go away.
Well, I understand that.
Gotcha.
No, my, my, I understand, Dean, there are, there are some properties, especially on Endicott Street North, that probably won't be able to be used for anything without a lot of, ton of work. But I don't think, I'm, I hope I'm not the only one at this table that has seen the growth of these storage things because it's quick money. And the, the, you put them up, they get full. When Al put those babies up there at Belmont, I thought, there's no way they're going to fill all of us. They're all full, pretty much. A lot of tennis rackets, I guess, out there and stuff. So, so my, my concern would be, and I thought that the council had addressed this as their concern back when they had decided to, I need you to back me up on this. They decided to prevent this in the, in the CR zone was that in fact, that a lot of valuable property could be, have these kind of weed things grow up where they're, they're storage things. And perhaps that would prohibit the kind of growth that the council was actually looking for in some of these neighborhoods areas. That, that, that's all I'm talking about. So maybe, maybe the answer is, I guess you've got it in here saying that, you know, everyone would be decided by right? Is that correct? Each, each.
Case by case.
Case by case would be, would be the way to do that. But that gets sticky too, because, because then what I may think is undeveloped prop, you know, property, it's not going to be developed easily without a ton of money. Somebody else might say that's a piece of cake. We can do that real quick with no issues at all. I don't know.
Well, by the time it gets to the board, it was probably already gone through TRC. The staff has dealt with it. Worked with the applicant. And there's a lot of steps in there. I think he's, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to address there's a need for this. It's a, it's a logical accessory use for the properties considering, you know, the CR zone is all about voting and access to the lake and stuff like that. So if between now and the next meeting, if further information needs to be distributed, we can do that too. If we notice it, well, you may get some public input in writing that we'll have before us by the time we actually deal with it. So.
And this would still go to the council?
Yeah, because we can adopt an ordinance only.
Final decision.
Right. We, we'd basically be making a recommendation to the city councils. Yes, Scott.
So Dean, just for clarity, these would be commercial enterprises, self-storage.
Yes.
Commercial enterprises.
Yes.
So this board or some other authority would ultimately have the ability to vote down the construction of a facility like this on, let's say, prime real estate. Yes or no?
Yes, because it's a conditional use.
Yes.
If we want to use the example of the, of the property that's next to Cumberland Farms, if, which I know was part of the controversy five or six years ago now. If, if the board said that's not the right location for that kind of a unit, yes, you, you could vote it down now. Could they still take you to court and, and contend, you know, you're being unreasonable or, or whatever? Absolutely. But because of the nature of a conditional use permit where it is discretionary, I, I think you have a much better shot of, of defending that than they have of overturning by, by any.
Thank you.
And if, if I could, again, like you, the plan that Al Mitchell had never came before the planning board because the outcry from residents, not just up at that neighborhood, but across the board citywide, was people were really upset about that. And Al responded to that. That may not happen with somebody from Manchester or some other place.
If this was adopted, if this had been adopted before that situation, it would have come before this board with a plan to, to basically screen that building from being an eyesore. And if the property is a prominent location on a top of a hill, kind of like that, you know, there's many different sides to that property that could be shielded.
Well, that, that, but, but it wasn't that it could be shielded or not shielded. People were upset because they said that that they felt was a very poor use of property, right, inside of the wheels. But, but again, the, the council reacted to all that by having a C, CR zone put out there so that you couldn't do a period anywhere. So now we're looking to maybe mitigate that somehow. That's all. I'm just.
I think that's a fair assessment or tweak in it. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so what is the pleasure of the board? You asked most of the questions. Charlie, you want to make a motion?
No.
Thanks.
No, because I'm not, I'm not.
You can make a motion to.
Listen, I have nothing but respect for the planning department, especially Dean here and his staff. I really do. And you know, I don't know where this is all coming from. I'm assuming people have been banging on Dean's door saying, we have to do this. I'm not in favor of it. I really am not. I, because I think it opens up a lot of doors to court cases, people thinking they're getting screwed by, well, they let them do it, but they're not letting me do it. What, what the hell is this? So I, I personally am satisfied that the public is in general, especially along that those properties up there are happy the way it is. Yeah, there's boats being stored outside, but those boats are gone.
So you could make a motion to table it then?
I'll make a motion to table it because I think.
Motion made. Is there a second?
But I think, I think we need to point out, Dean asked that if we table it, you give him guidance.
Yeah, and I would do that. I, I think, and that's fair. That's fair. So do I make the motion with the guidance or do that if we do table it? Well, okay, I guess.
Motion by Mr. St. Clair. Is there a second?
We could discuss the motion after.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Chaney. Discussion?
So
But while you're at it.
Right out the door. I, I think, Dean, that again, it gets down to the discussion of prime property, of property that normal, if you human being would be able to say, well, then what else you could do with this? And then that becomes how people look at stuff. So I don't know. So I don't know. I'm, you know, maybe, maybe I should withdraw it. I'm just, I'm just not in favor of, of doing it anyway, but at best, I, I think it'd be fair to table it again. And see what other arguments can be made. Whether it's from the public or from Dean. I'm only one vote.
But how are we going to know what the public is thinking if we don't toss it out there? And at least listen to them.
Why can't, can we?
We can, right? All we do is make recommendations.
That we give notice and do a public hearing and then make a decision.
In fairness, we had a ground.
In fairness, we had a ground swell of opposition. To the first.
And that was six years ago.
Well, the room is the same size.
True.
No matter who's sitting up here, right?
Yeah, I I don't know what's changed other than some people that want to put these things on on their property, so.
See, but the problem is this, the purpose of having zoning regulations is to encourage certain uses and discourage others, right?
And that's what this was for.
Okay, but it's not to do spot zoning. It's not to say. Well, it's such a beautiful property, why would he want to put anything there? That's not our job. Well, people own real estate, they have a right, reasonable use and enjoyment of that property, and if. They think the highest and best use is a boat storage facility, great, but right now they can't anywhere in the CR zone. Do the indoor storage.
And there's a reason for that.
Well, I understand that, but there's also a tremendous pressure because the CR zone. This, there's a lot more boating in that zone than there is in, say, urban commercial or rural residential.
Alright, so let's look at where the people are putting their boats now, because they're not all putting them in the yards. And I would look at the development up in Guilford, Guilford Storage, sorry. Guilford Storage has put, if you go by there, they've put up these massive buildings on the top of the hill up there. And those were made strictly for boats. And then the owner of the property said, well, and I get these empty buildings in the summer, what do I do with it? So now he's giving you a pretty good rate for summer storage only. But that's what that's what some developers have done. They said, geez, you know, I got this property here, this is big need for boats. Storage, so they've done that. We can look in Lakeport near your neighborhood. Where there was a need for boat storage and they you saw what they put up there. So people are are finding places to put their boats. Uh, we approved the plan up there uh in that CR zone, uh the old antique place there, pause there. And they they've got, we allowed them to do outside boat storage there. Did you go by there now? And I think there's two platoon boats or whatever you call them, pontoon boats. And that will be undoubtedly full in the winter. And did he ask to put up some buildings in the back there? I don't recall. I don't remember.
Not buildings, no.
Yeah, he was content with what he had because like you said. I just, he just does that. And they put them up there on scenic road. Am I wrong there across from uh? This is not up there, we talked about that too. So it's not like this, the the people are, you know. Casting their boats adrift because they have no place to put them. So I don't know how much personally, uh, Mr. Chair, I don't know how tremendous this pressure is other than certain individuals complaining about it.
Well, it's your motion. Do you wish to withdraw it?
No.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
And 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 we can still talk about.
The motion is simply to table the proposal to the next meeting. Alright. All those in favor, uh, we gotta do a roll call, right? No, we don't? Well, what do you guys prefer? Say, I raise hands. I guess we'll raise hands, alright? All those in favor of tabling this issue to the next meeting, um, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, opposed? Okay, it looks like motion fails.
What was the phone?
Uh, four, four, which is um not a win, right? Doesn't it four, four?
Five, four.
Five, four, okay. Sorry. So now, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we schedule a public hearing?
Okay, I'll make a motion um that we send this to a a public hearing to get the public's input. And then we can decide to table it after that public hearing or deny it or send it to. The city council.
Yep, okay, there's a motion made for seconded by Ms. Susie.
October fifth meeting.
October fifth is the day to the next meeting. Is there any discussion on this motion? Sensing that, yes?
The other thing, once we have some public input, we can at least give Dean maybe some guidance. It will give him a direction moving.
Correct, right.
Yeah, because they might ask questions that we're not even thinking.
Yeah, that we, I'm sure they will, and and the parties that are most interested in the change will hopefully arrive, you know, will attend, so. Alright, all those in favor of the motion, uh, please raise their hands. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It looked unanimous, yes.
Big one, pass it down.
Okay, we're.
Moving on to number two.
Second presentation, performance zoning in the Weers.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's hear it.
Get a chance for that. Keep cooking, bottle washer.
Uh, the proposal is to create a performance zoning overlay district in the Weers area. We currently have two. Performance overall, uh, performance zoning overlay districts. Uh, in the city. Uh, performance zoning concept was introduced in the two thousand eighteen master plan land use chapter. I have attached. Three excerpts from the master plan, the land use chapter. Uh, these are the ones that refer to the Weers and commercial resort district. And the Weers Boulevard, although under my proposal, the not much of the Weers Boulevard is is gonna be covered by this, but anyway. That the first excerpt talks about that. Second excerpt. Uh, again, mentions uh the Weers. Uh, we already have the commercial zoning in place in the other areas that are mentioned. Uh, but we do not at the Weers. And then the third uh recommendation from the master plan. Is to reconsider, uh, to consider rezoning the Weers based on past recommendations previously presented to the planning board. Or other variations, including performance zoning initiatives. These are excerpts right out of the uh master plan. Uh, moving on to page two. Uh, as I mentioned, performance zoning was enacted in July of two thousand nineteen. Covers the entire UC district, which again is Court Street, Union Avenue, the downtown area. A few offshoots in the Lakeport area and the state school vicinity, not just the state school property, but. A few other properties that are adjacent uh to it. Why the Weers and why now? The consensus. I believe in the community and particularly on this board over the past few years has been. There needs to be a revitalization of Weers Beach in particular. Uh, but the general Weers area. Uh, I will tell you that there is recent development interest and activity. We will, we are having a, uh, one of your applications tonight is for one of the marinas. I I know that. That same arena will be before this board. In a future meeting with further plans. Um, there is. Without revealing. Confidential information here, uh, there are a couple of very large pieces of land that we probably all can figure out what they are. That are either underdeveloped, under a P and a PNS or will be shortly. And uh what the various proposals are are actually quite exciting. Uh, the idea here under performance zoning is to make it more attractive to developers. Uh, there are still going to be other pieces of land that have been just sitting there that that would be great if things could happen. And I do want to remind you that under performance zoning, you as the planning board hold the power. They do not have to go to zoning board or other boards for uh variances and everything else. You have the power for density, for setbacks, for all kinds of uh things to alleviate. If you feel it's an appropriate uh plan and for the location, for the area, for the city in general. Um, again, it's a a discretionary type approval because it's a conditional use. Concept uh for performance zoning. Performance zoning allows the developer. To propose, not necessarily to be approved for, but to propose greater density that would than what would normally be allowed in. On that piece of property, to propose setbacks that perhaps do not conform. To propose parking requirements that perhaps do not conform to our rules. Uh, to perhaps propose a building that is taller than we would allow. I'm not saying that any any or all of these things are are on the table or going to be introduced. I'm just giving you the highlights of what. Performance zoning allows a developer to do. Uh, a couple of places where performance zoning has already been used in the city. Uh, the Elm Street project, uh, the corner Elm and Railroad and 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 Park Street. Uh, they needed it for their front setback because the previous buildings were built. Essentially, part of them were in the city right of way. And when they and they got some other jigs and jogs there on the property lines, and so. Although we've cleaned up some of those property lines, uh, in order for them to fit the buildings in that they wanted to propose, they needed relief from the. Front setback along Elm Street instead of having five feet, they only have like two or three feet in some places. Uh, in all other aspects, they conform to traditional zoning, so that was the one concession that. Uh, that we made. The uh redevelopment of the Barton's motel site started out as performance zoning because they thought they were going to need relief. From setback and density, and as it turned out, as they went down the path and finalized their plans, they realized that they could fit everything in. And maintain correct setbacks and uh not exceed density requirements. So in the end, they did not need performance zoning, but. I believe it was a a catalyst that got them moving in the right direction in terms of what they were proposing. And. Anything that's going to happen at the state school property will require a substantial use of performance zoning. Because all of that property. So are one, which is two acre zoning, meaning one unit of house, and it's all residential. One unit of residential per every two acres, it's a two hundred and twenty-five acre. Par parcel, so you can do the math, uh, and there's wetlands and et cetera, so. They maybe could get a hundred units of housing there. They are, under their master plan, they are proposing upwards of two hundred and twenty-five or there's about. Among other uses, so there'll be retail, there'll be hospitality, commercial, whatever. In that area as well. Nobody's gonna go up there. I don't think anybody is gonna go up there and and build two acre zoning housing. I don't think anybody that's. On the radar or gonna show any interest in that property is is gonna propose that. I don't think you can make any money doing that.
That property is already subject to performance zoning.
It is, yes, yes. Um, so what we are suggesting, if you go onto the next page, is to use existing TIF boundaries. As the boundary for the performance zoning overlay district. Everything in the tan is currently in the TIF district. It includes. Uh, the drive-in property, it includes uh what is uh. Going to be presented to you tonight, the the gardens at Winter Pasaki property, it includes uh. What used to be the water park, I forget what the name of it was there. It includes uh the fair, what used to be uh Pharaoh slash Howard Johnson slash. The various incarnations of that building, uh, includes the property across the street, includes the infamous property that Charlie was talking about earlier. Among others. So the idea here is to is to not create a new boundary, which could be confusing to folks, but rather to. Use the exact same boundary and I and I I think that. Uh, for the most part, it already encompasses the parcels of land. That we probably would desire to be redeveloped. Again, going back to that. Desire to revitalize the Weers, these are the properties that people look at today and say, why is that empty? And why is there nothing there? Type type thing, so that's the proposal. Questions or comments?
Your statement consensus is to revitalize the Weers. Isn't it premature to do this before we've addressed the master plan changes? I mean, we've just begun the discussion for the what's. Going to be an extensive revision of the city's master plan. It's overdue.
Could could be, yes.
Okay, so. I don't see consensus is to revitalize the Weers, doesn't really provide us with much guidance. The the. Master Plan Steering Committee could. Kind of zoom in on that. Issue. Might result in a completely different. Recommendations.
Good, yes.
So. I guess my preference is that we revisit this a little bit further down the process of. Reviewing our and revising our master plan. And we have, we we haven't reached a consensus in that committee yet. We've talked about a lot of things, but we really haven't reached consensus, right?
Correct, but I mean, I I'm I'm referring to comments that various board members have made over the years, and I'm referring to comments that I hear. In the in the community in general of. You know, we need to do something to make this a more year-round. Area, we need to revitalize, as I've mentioned to this board and others many, many times with the. With the changeover of of several of the cottage colonies and motels to to condominiums. It has changed the dynamic of of the summer vacation. Uh, in this area in that you don't have this weekly turnover. Of a new family every week sitting in the motel room or the cottage, and they go out and do the touristy type things. Whereas if you're a condo owner, you come up and you go ride the go-karts once and, okay, I've done that. I don't need to do it again. And, you know, and you also have a kitchen in your condo as opposed to going out to eating. So I mean, it has changed. It's one of the reasons that uh. The tourist industry has been a challenge here lately. I I see a resurgence, COVID. Has been a a quite a resurgence in terms of people being here because. They 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 couldn't, they couldn't go to the Caribbean and they couldn't go to wherever, so they they came here, which was great last year. And this summer. But will that continue? I don't know, and people have hopefully a little more freedom. Uh, that may change, but you know, it's it, we have a lot of vacant land in the Weers right now, and there there are. Uh, some very concrete proposals that will be. Uh, public relatively soon. And and there are some major tire kickers that are looking at various pieces of land, and I I view this as an incentive. It's not necessarily something that they're all gonna take advantage of. And it may not produce exactly the developments that you want to approve, but I I believe that it it's it's a nice incentive. Kind of the strike while the iron is hot type comment, I guess.
I understand the position here, and that's for sure. Yes, Brett.
I have a question. So i- if we move forward on this, whatever way we're going, but if we move forward on this. Does it limit somehow the decisions that the master plan steering committee can make? Um, this area?
I don't, I don't think so. You can always change the criteria of the performance zoning, if that's what you want to do.
I mean, because if if we say, okay, hey, you know, this sounds like a good idea. It'll be incentive for people that, you know, maybe that one extra unit they could fit on there makes it economically viable and stuff. So if we say, yeah, let's make this all performance zoning, it doesn't mean that they automatically get it. They still have to come in front of us. And we have to say it's a good idea.
Absolutely.
But what I'm saying, like, Peter brought up that the master plan steering committee is still meeting, so maybe the word consensus. So maybe the word consensus doesn't apply to the master plan committee. But if we say, yeah, let's make this performance zoning. Does it limit or does it change what the master plan steering committee does? No, they still develop their own opinions.
Yes.
Right? So we're not tying their hands anyway.
Right, but the the problem is that the statute requires that these changes. Are done in accordance with the master plan. If I'm not mistaken, it says that. All zoning and planning regulations should be consistent with the master.
Right, right, so I mean, we have, we have a three-year-old master plan. Just not old by master plans standards.
Right.
Which that master plan took. Almost three years.
Yeah.
To to come to fruition.
But wouldn't you agree that it's not comprehensive?
I I personally would not agree with that. Well, it's very different.
Right. Okay.
So from the three excerpts that you have from the. From the master plan.
Yes.
Is there a likelihood that any of those that you've used to substantiate this this idea? Are gonna change with the new steering committee?
Certainly. The middle one. I would say no, because we've already instituted it. Everywhere that's mentioned except for except for the wiers area. I don't. I don't envision. Anyone in this community doing something that's going to be a detriment to the wiers in the Route Three corridor. Stranger things have happened, of course, but I. I I think most people's best intentions are that we're, you know, we're trying to improve the community and we're trying to make things happen. And then. Again, on the third one, I I I think. I think we're. It's not just the wiers. That we are looking to do rezoning or change zoning rules. Master Plan Steering Committee is looking at. You know, density within existing districts, you know, what what should the right density be? What should the setbacks be? You know, those kinds of things that doesn't change the zoning district per se. But it does change the nature of those.
Right, so in in that circumstance, they could change it so that. A property might not need the performance zoning.
Correct.
Exemption.
Correct.
If we have performance zoning, that takes the zoning board out of the picture, correct?
If you follow the process, right, the process of the performance zoning is they've got to give you conceptual plan first. There are some other criteria that, you know, they got to be of a certain size and and proposing. A minimum amount of of either multifamily or or retail or commercial type. You know, use, it's not just for somebody's deck on their backyard. So you you do the conceptual, that gives that's again, all the power is in the planning board. You either like the concept or you don't. If you say yes, then they go off and then they completely design the 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 project. And again, you have discretion of how much leeway that you want to give to the developer. If they if they come in and say, we want to put a hundred units on this acre in the in the conceptual plan and you say. You know, we'll we'll go to sixty maybe, but that's it. Then, you know, they've got a decision to make. They're gonna go proceed with a sixty or are they gonna? Go away or are they gonna proceed with a hundred with the with the idea that you you probably say no, you know? Do I answer your question?
Yep.
Okay.
In regard to the chair's concerns about this proposal perhaps being premature. Or somehow bypassing the work that the master plan steering committee is doing. And with all due respect to the good work they're doing. I I see this as perhaps a way to, you know, master plans can be. Need consensus building are time consuming. And it's all good, but I think this perhaps this proposal is a way to jumpstart, if you will, this revitalization. And still recognizing the work of the master's plan steering committee. And. Taking advantage of opportunities that might just be knocking on the door that might otherwise. Disappear.
Any other questions or comments? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Will this also require a public hearing?
Yes.
So that's what we should be proposing. I'd make a motion that we move this to a public hearing.
Motion made by Council Chini, is there a second? Seconded by the chief, any further discussion? All right. If all those in favor, please raise your hand. Pose.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving right along. We have an extension. PL twenty fourteen dash zero one five H U P amended to sixty-one Pendleton. And then Perrin's two oh five Wentworth Cove, right, okay. Request extension to construct single-family home within the wetland buffer. Okay, do we hear from the applicant on that one? Everybody here from or for the sixty-one Pendleton. Property extension request. Okay, well, Dean, do you know what's up with that?
They have, they received a conditional use permit for this property. In two thousand and fourteen, they have been applying for extensions since then. I believe. Other than this property, I believe there's only one other vacant lot in this subdivision. All the others have been purchased and and developed, so.
My only concern is the wetlands delineations can change over time.
They can, in this case. I would. Doubt that they have, it's not a. It's not a very well-defined, it's defined, but it's not a. Not a very robust wetland, it's it's a kind of a mixed area. It's not like a flowing stream or pond or it's it's just a little bit of marsh area, so I I don't, I don't believe that it would change much. At any rate.
Is this stretch of Wentworth Cove an accepted city street?
Believe it ends just prior to this property.
It was prior to.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause they're on the other end of this, when it comes out on the Pendleton, they're in their log, it's there. Clearing a substantial rate in there.
Yeah.
Okay, well. What is the guess we do in the absence of the applicant?
I I thought it was clear to him that he needed to be here, but.
I mean, we could table it. Or we can deny it. Or we can improve it. I mean, there's no requirement the app can actually be for us, right?
No, but I think it's certainly desirable, but I I. In this, in this instance, I think it's low risk to to grant the extension.
What do the members, other members of the board think about that?
I have, I just have a question for Dean. If we don't grant the extension. They have to come back. And apply for a new CUP. And in the meantime, if wetland buffers change, say. Then that new CUP would be under the new buffers.
Correct, it would be a new application. As part of that application, we would want the wetlands to be delineated again. I mean, they certainly could apply for a waiver, they could ask for a waiver of that. But. Yeah, yeah, they would essentially be.
Starting over.
Starting from scratch. I mean, the lot still exists, but. The, I don't think anybody's been down there, these are very expensive homes down there. You could build a small house. You know, a little more forward and and less comprehensive on the property and not need. The CUP, but. That's not what's being built there, you know, these are. Very expensive, very large homes.
Okay, so, yes.
I thought you said that the, what number extension request is this? Because I flipped it over, it said this is the first extension request.
Since the last.
Yeah, that's not correct. I would say this is the.
It's got a twenty fourteen.
It's probably either the fifth or sixth.
And did they tell you why or?
He hasn't sold the property yet, so he wants to maintain the CUP so that he can sell.
Well, what's the pleasure of the board? We have three options for if you want to get creative.
I have something to say, that's okay. I've been witnessing a lot of people abusing the wetland buffers. I'm not saying that that's what's happening here, but I see it going on more and more. I live on Lake Opechik and I'm and I have questions about what's going on there right now. In some cases. This particular person looking for, how many extensions did you say?
This would be either fifth or sixth.
Yeah, I think that it, I think this is something that personally. They should reapply for. And have the Wetlands Bureau reevaluate. Setbacks and so forth to make sure that. We're within the scope of where we should be. I think that this should be denied and. They make reapplication.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
And the other thing is is that they're not here, not and that. That's very telling to me too. So I make a motion that this is denied and they must reapply.
There's a motion to deny the request for extension. Is there a second? A second by Council Chini? Any further discussion? So my only comment is, Susan, you're quite right. As I said earlier, it's possible that the wetland delineation will have changed over time. If this is a twenty fourteen, that's seven years, I guess, so six times they've come for an extension. But on the other hand, we normally grant such extensions. To the point where I think the applicants tend to expect it. But the reason set that you stated in the meeting, in the motion, in support of the motion, I think are reasonable. Does anybody else have any ideas?
Could I just comment? I mean, I think our planning director said he specifically told them they should appear. So it's not like. You know, they.
Well, we don't know why someone doesn't appear. They might have had an accident.
I understand that.
And and these, for years, such extensions were automatic almost.
We have homes now that.
Yeah.
Which has made us be complacent as well if we expect it.
Well, and it sounds like that that this is a real estate speculation deal and some, to some extent too, it's not. Somebody wants to build a home themselves, trying to get a seller, they're trying to get a buyer. For this in a very desirable neighborhood.
One last question.
Sure.
Dean, do you remember how much into the buffer they were going? Was it a good deal or was it like five feet or?
Part, part of the issue there. The buffers changed. The subdivision was approved. When we were at the thirty-foot buffers. And it went to fifty foot. All lots, all existing lots of record in the city. That are adjacent to a wetland, had their buffers increased, so this is not a unique situation. And so they had to come in and and. Get the CUP and I believe the CUP was to was to go to the thirty feet. As opposed to the fifty.
Which would have been the original.
The original, yeah.
Okay.
Did you make a statement? Seems like now that you were okay with this extension. I hear you say that.
I think you said it was low risk.
It was a low risk to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't really think anything has changed out there. Year or two, but.
If we deny it, will that? Prevent possibly the construction of a home on that lot? Because of the buffer change?
You could get a much smaller home. On the lot. My guess is if if. He gets a buyer for it, then he's gonna, he's gonna come in and ask for the CUP, that would be my guess, but.
So he's not anything at this point. If we denied it.
No, I mean, there's still a lot of record there. There are things that you could do with the lot. Without the CUP. Would make it challenging, but not impossible. And he certainly could reapply, you know, he could come in with the. Logic that it's a low-grade wetland, which it is, but. You know, wetlands, wetland in in the city, so we we don't distinguish between prime or poor or anything like that, you know?
Right, yes, God.
I, we, as the chair stated, we don't know why the applicant is not present. I don't see any harm in tabling this to give the applicant another opportunity to appear. I think it would generate goodwill as well from the board to give the applicant another opportunity to appear. No harm in tabling.
Well, we have a motion pending. All right, anything further on the motion? All right, so all the motion is, you're coming in exactly, what was it? Just to deny it, okay. The motion is to deny the request for an extension. All those in favor signify by raising their hands. And opposed? Okay, so the motion fails, so Mr. McWilliam, would you like to make a motion?
I'm not seated as a regular member.
Yes, you are right now.
There you are.
So far, because.
Until Mike shows up.
Until the mystery man arrives.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to table the applicant's request for an extension. This is labeled. PL two zero one four dash zero one five eight CUP AMD two. Located at two oh five Wentworth Cove.
Excellent, there's a motion, is there a second? Second for Mr. St. Clair. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say, I will raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, so one opposed. I believe. Motion carries. Yes, I think he was fortunate. Okay. Moving right along. Nine point one. PL twenty twenty one zero one one. Oh. SU Amendment one, six oh nine Main Street Colonial Theater. Proposal to sub condomum, you're gonna make me say that, condominiumize. Sub condominum minimizes each unit, it's gonna be another way to say that. Each unit for a total of nine residential units, a waiver is requested for eighty percent of the impact fee and. Before we get to it, we need a motion to accept, is the application in order and ready for acceptance?
It is.
I guess, okay, so would someone care to make a motion to accept this application?
To accept.
Okay, motion made, is there a second? Second by Counselor Cheney? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, opposed, motion carries. Um, okay, let's hear about it. Come on up.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Rob Turpin, I'm with Mashashik Turpin, Architects Planning, Architecture Planning here in town. And I'm here on behalf of Bellnap EDC and EJM Holdings regarding the larger Colonial Theater block revitalization project that's been ongoing. Two years ago, when we. Presented to this board, the larger condominiumizing of the project. Into the three distinct units of the theater, the apartments and the retail units. The board asked us then, when the time came, for sub condominiumizing.
You're just showing off, Sam.
I've been rehearsing. Each of those units, the board asked if we could come back and present the intent. Of the, of that sub condoing of those, and so that's why we're here tonight. So quickly, I'll hopefully be fairly brief with this. With the drawings that we presented to the board before, just a quick refresher of the, the larger Colonial Theater block. We are focusing on the two upper floors of what we had always been calling through this process Episcopal block. That's the retail at the Main Street, the main entry for the theater, then the two apartment floors above. Kind of as you remind everybody, this first floor plan, the two access points for the apartment floors. Are the historic Main Street stairs that have been, that are being restored now. And will be reused again as, as one of those entry points, and then of course, the new elevator that's coming off of Canal. So then when we hit. The second and third floors, what we are, the intent now, previously, two years ago, it was a ten. Apartment units were granted as a maximum, we're presenting tonight as only nine. On the second floor, there'll be five units. To mix a two bedroom and one bedroom, and then on the third floor will be four units, the central unit. Is a stacked single unit.
Yes.
With an internal stair connection. So we have the nine total. On the presentation drawings, we'd number them with the bigger letters or bigger numbers, I should say, one to nine. The smaller lettering and numbering below is actually the official designation of the units. Everybody in the block is under six oh nine Main Street, and then each retail and each apartment has a sub designation of unit. For instance, on the apartment units, two oh one, two oh three, that, so on and so forth. What I can tell you is Mr. McClear's attorney is currently developing the sub condominiumizing documents now. And those will be made available to the board when they're ready to go.
Okay, thank you, any questions for the applicant? Oh. Oh, public hearing, right? Okay, seven forty seven, we're going to declare a public hearing. Are there any members of the public or supporters that wish to be heard regarding this application? Mr. Morris, is there anybody in Zoom land that wants to be heard on this one?
There is no one online that has identified themselves and wishes to speak for or against the application.
Okay, last call, everybody. All right, then we'll close the public hearing at seven forty eight and get the staff report, please.
Our staff recommends approval, I'm not even gonna attempt to say the word.
Sub condominiumizing.
A condo. Yeah, condo, yeah. The, this, this is a condo under a condo, this is, you know, basically the same concept we have down in South Town where you have. High level. SRDA, and then you have each village have their own thing, so you're gonna have a high level condominium. Agreement, which includes the theater, the retail units and the, and the, and the residential, and then within the residential, you'll have nine. Individual owners.
These would be residential units, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We don't have anything unusual, you can see. We do need to look at the condo documents. And there's some comments about the fire alarms and access to any common roof space and trash removal requirements. Which they will be incorporating into their condo docs as well. Play, and they are asking for a waiver. Of eighty percent of the impact fee. This project qualifies for that waiver. Because it is a reuse and infill situation, which is what we have set up the waiver. To do this exact kind of thing. We're in favor of that as well.
All right. Do we recommend the waiver and the council approves that?
Uh, no, you.
We can approve the impact fee.
If you agree that it is infill and refill, refill and, and fill and reuse, sorry.
Okay. So. What's the pleasure of the board? Any questions for staff? We hit there? Okay, well. We, we need two motions, right?
Yes.
So we need. To vote on the waiver, we might as well vote on the waiver first, right? So all those in favor of the, well, could we have a motion regarding the waiver? Yeah, right?
Um. Okay. I'm making a motion for PL two zero two one dash zero one one zero SU Amendment one. For six oh nine Main Street for the waiver for eighty percent of the impact fee.
Second.
And a second by Chief Beatty, does it? Yes. Any further discussion on the waiver motion? All right, sensing none, all those in favor, raise your hand, motion carries unanimously. Anyone like Stacy like to make a motion? To approve the sub condominiumizing.
Have to say the word.
You have to twice.
So, I'd like to make a motion that PL two zero two one dash zero zero nine nine, no, I am sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Dash zero one one zero SU Amendment one. To sub condo minimize each unit for a total of nine residential units.
You only did it once and you missed a syllable.
I did.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this? Sensing none, all those in favor, I raise your hand, opposed? Go forth, sub condominimize.
Thank you, have a good evening, everybody, thank you very much.
Condominimize. Condominimize.
Mini amount.
Let's see, if you have to put the accent on the correct syllable. Okay. Let's see here, PL twenty twenty one zero zero nine nine SP. And zero one zero zero SU. Zero one zero one CUP, steep slope. Zero one zero two CUP for the wetland buffer. Zero one oh three CUP, the cluster. Zero one oh four CUP, the Veronpool. And this goes on further, zero one zero six CUP. Cluster setback, zero one zero six CUP perimeter buffer. This is all pertaining to Endicott Street East. Parcel M B R one sixty four dash seventy two dash one. Here to forward, referred to as the Gardens, it's a proposal to construct eighty nine residential units and. In a cluster subdivision and associated road drainage and landscape. And of course, a waiver is requested for a reduced cluster buffer from seventy five to forty feet. Within the S F R district. So this was previously accepted by the board at the last meeting. Let's. Hear from the applicant, if we could.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, my name is, and members of the board. My name is Tim Britton, I'm with Cleveland Rogers and Bass, and we represent Jennings Excavation, Inc. Which I will refer to from time to time as simply Jennings. With me tonight is David Jennings. The president of the company that bears his name, and Jason Hill from TF Moran. I'm here just to provide some introductory remarks and background for the application, Jason will be doing the, the hard work in a few minutes. So Jennings Excavation owns a certain parcel of land located on New Hampshire Route eleven B, also known as Endicott Estates East. And it's described as the chair has already. Indicated as tax map six one sixty four seventy two one. The property is approximately twenty one point four acres in size and was purchased by Jennings Excavation earlier this year. Jennings intends to establish a cluster residential development on the site with eighty seven units, not eighty nine as indicated in the agenda. With sixty eight lots, including a combination of single family detached and duplex structures, so there'll be approximately forty nine. Home sites for single family properties and nineteen sites for duplex or two family properties. The property is located in the Shoreland Residential Zoning District. And as this board well knows, this property has had a long history before this planning board. In two thousand and five, the property originally was approved to be developed as a one hundred and twenty six. Unit multi-family development known as Shaker Hill Estates, and those approvals lapsed and expired in two thousand and eight. But before those permits expired, a substantial amount of site work was performed on the property in two thousand and eight, which. In compliance with the existing zoning and planning regulations, which significantly altered the topography and nature of the property. This change in landscape included clearing for roads, installation of substantial drainage system. And installation of pipes for that drainage system and a proposed sewer system. When the economy went into recession in two thousand and eight, the development was put on hold, and as I indicated, subsequently, those approvals expired. In two thousand and sixteen, a subsequent owner, Phoenix Capital. Proposed to establish a cluster residential development on the site with the same number of units, eighty seven units, and in the same. Type of development, both single family and duplex structures. The proposal was to use the existing road design and utilities from the prior Shaker Hill project. To limit additional impact on the site and to permit better clustering of the residential structures. In twenty, in, in November of twenty seventeen, this board granted several CUPs, excuse me. In connection with the project, quite similar to those that are proposed tonight. And final, and granted final subdivision and site plan review for the cluster subdivision as, as Jason Hill will explain. In greater detail momentarily. It's, I won't go through the gory details of the title history to the property. But suffice it to say that Dave Jennings has had a long, long history with this property, he was involved in some of the work back in two thousand and eight. And because of that work, he now, he's, has become the owner of the property. So what we're here for tonight, basically, is to. Ask approval for the same project that this board previously approved, same number of units. This project will be condominimized. And so. For just a brief procedural history, we've been following sort of the same steps that was followed in connection with the prior project. We did go to the zoning board in July and they granted the same variances that they had granted previously with respect to this project. We have met with the Conservation Commission two times now. The last time included a joint sidewalk between the Conservation Commission and members of the planning board, some of whom I see here tonight. It wasn't, it was a, a very interesting sidewalk, and I think illuminative of the benefits of this project. So we think the CONCOM is in favor of what we are proposing tonight. I know there's a staff report that you'll hear about later, so I'll conclude by simply saying we ask that you. Reapprove the same project that the board approved in twenty seventeen, and with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Jason.
All right, thanks, thanks, Tim. Jason Hill, I'm a project manager at TF Moran. Licensed professional engineer in the state of New Hampshire. I believe you all have a color copy of a graphic three D illustration, which will, I have access if anyone needs copies. So just let me know, it looks like you're all set, and that's that plan, which I have on the board, does a good job of. Outlying the scope work, and I'm gonna try to be brief. Hit the main elements, just read, I recognize some of you from many discussions that we'd had during the process for the original. Former project, and it's nice to see you all again, that was, I think, a good experience, a collaborative experience, so. We thank the Laconia Planning Board for its work on that project, and just to recap your memories, and for those of you new. This is an aerial map of the site, this is from two thousand and seventeen, plus or minus from Google Earth. Just showing the, the four, a four mentioned development of the property where we, this was a interim phase where the project was in the construction phase. But it's, it's been grown up with. Little saplings and such in the areas that have been formally cleared, but it's generally resembles this image with, you can see the, the twenty acre site. Has been substantially disturbed, earth moving, road excavation. Stockpiling of gravel, stockpiling of rock, stockpiling of sands and other construction materials. Construction of a detention bond at the north, northeast corner of the site. That was facilitated this development. Which is Shaker Heights. Hundred and twenty six unit townhouse development, early two thousands, early to mid two thousands, it came in, I believe. You can see the general comparison of the road network. From what we're proposing. To this road network, it's actually this. The, the center lines, all the roads remain. Pretty much almost identical, and that was due to many certain advantages and. Minimization strategies to the onsite wetlands and the areas, which I'll talk about later, this development was. Under the original, Dean mentioned the thirty foot setbacks, the former wetland setbacks of thirty feet. And the earlier two thousand period, which have been updated to fifty feet at this currently. So this project encroached into, and partially has disturbed legally some of those areas. To the thirty foot setback that existed when, when that project was constructed. The key design parameters that we utilized. Like I said, some of the existing infrastructure was in place, some of the drainage system, the roads roughed in, other things. Some of the sewer line had been installed. So the key was to minimize the amount of additional work by utilizing the existing, some of the existing infrastructure constructed during the Shaker project. I mentioned and showed you those improvements on the aerial map. So taking that plan, reducing the density by changing the, the use from multi-family townhouse-style developments to a clustered development where we could utilize single and duplex structures. We reduced the density by about thirty-one percent of housing. This allowed us to work better with the terrain and such where we don't have these large townhouse buildings taking up a lot of land and other benefits, reduce the amount of impervious coverage by just the nature of the density of the overall project. So that was some of the key benefits which fall in line with the cluster ordinance and what the cluster ordinance seeks in Laconia and many communities. So the density reduction, minimization of impervious surfaces. Allowing us to the single-story developed buildings, so sorry, the detached units allowing us to grade to minimize the amount of grading and therefore further disturbance to any non-disturbed areas. So it minimized the footprint of the effective overall footprint of the project. We were able to preserve a component of the project that is a, so one real brief thing, when the, in two twenty oh seven-ish, twenty oh eight, when the, when the Shaker Heights project fell under, it was disturbed, obviously, had been opened, raided partially. It needed to be stabilized for erosion control purposes. Contractor, we developed the plan, contractor executed the plan, involved several ditches or cross, the, the terrain all falls as you fall away from, this is across the street from the Surf Coaster, former Surf Coaster, pretty much. So it's just falling as you head north, it falls. So we, for stabilization, constructed a few cross ditches with swales and check dams to control the runoff, minimize erosion control. Those had developed into, there's a high, relatively high water table over much of this property. So due to that condition, these ditches without maintenance, they're going to evolve into a jurisdictional wetland or man-made wetlands. But they, over time, because of the water table, developed the criteria subject to them being classified as wetlands. So those are this plan shows the same plan, but it's there was also a, an area near Endicott Street East, which was proposed to be a clubhouse amenity for Shaker Heights. That was excavated, abandoned, high-water table, the same thing developed. You have a man-made cellar hole that's basically classified as a wetland now, man-made wetland in this position. And then we have a natural wetland complex through the center of the site, which is a forest of wetland in the Vernal Pool area. This is a natural corridor. Which we're not proposing to impact any proposed impacts to those areas other than what I'll outline. So that's generally the arrangement of the project. We have the Z B A approvals that we mentioned, we've received. We're looking for a waiver, which is, the Z B A already approved the perimeter. So this project that you're looking at is identical, almost identical. I mean, there's some technical microdetails, but to what was approved and reviewed and by the board, by you, your board in two thousand and seventeen. The roads have not changed, the density, the impacts, the wetlands are still current. We delineate the wetlands in two thousand and sixteen, twenty seventeen-ish. We actually, for our own purpose, when the wetland scientist reviewed the delineation, they're still accurate. So the wetlands haven't changed, the regulations haven't changed. And so that's basically on the same face, other than a new applicant, a new owner, project owner, and some technical details of the condominium. Same project, which consists of basically two entrances off of Endicott Streets. The front door, which is a main entrance drive, a two, two-way, obviously, which is basically opposite the adverse source stretching station, or they have a transformer coming up the hill out of the weirs. You have an adverse source switching station just beyond the surf coaster. And so that's the main access drive. We're proposing a secondary gated fire access drive named Ren Lane, which is a code requirement to be constructed at the fiftieth upon the CO, I believe, of the fiftieth unit that, although we're proposing that to be in the first phase, we're going to have a gated fire access drive north or east of, on the east side of the property. And so then we have the remaining loop road network. Which basically consists of various minor roads and loop road sections. Utilizing the majority of the properties utilized. We have the site context. You have the Northern Heights condominium is located to the east. There's another, there's a residential subdivision to the northeast of us. I don't know the name, official name. There's a large residential undeveloped parcel, the big one house with front to drop. Lucerne or another street up here. Then there's a city-owned park toward the weirs. And then we have some residential boulders. Box, the street on the south side of Endicott Street East. So that's, those are all, these will be all two-way private roads, privately maintained against same network of roads as what we currently designed or previously designed. Yeah, so getting on to just some of the, the remaining aspects before I open it up. We have a private septic or sewer system, private drainage, primarily all the drainages. There's a large pond that's been excavated already, which we're going to expand. It's at the low point of the site. East corner, an detention bond. And then there's a pump station for sewer. So we'll have a gravity, gravity sewer network. It's all fed into a private submersible lift station at the north side of the site with a force main, obviously, to tie into the existing gravity on Endicott Street East. We have done regarding the CUPs. We have met with the Conservation Commission and planning staff in a tech review process regarding the conditional use permits, which one would be for some, for wetland and wetland buffer impacts. These are some of the areas that were formerly impacted by the Shaker Heights development, meaning the trees have all been cleared to the thirty-foot setback for the original project. We're not looking to pursue any further approaching of the wetland areas, but we're looking, we're proposing to utilize those areas for some of the yards and amenities and some of the unit spaces, which was previously approved and reviewed by the board. We are so there's a wetland CUP, which is involved for just the actual wetlands, the actual wetland areas and their associated fifty-foot setback. And then there's the Vernal Pool, which is a in the center of the site, it seemed like a little bowl. And we, it was a very beneficial site walk we had with the Conservation Commission a few weeks ago, where we were able to observe the local just get a feel for the actual proposed, we're not proposing to waive the Vernal Pool setback, which is a hundred feet in Laconia. We're proposing an alternative setback, which is called a directional buffer, which is recognized by the Army Corps of Engineers. It was also approved by the D E S and Laconia for the original project, where instead of utilizing some of the areas within the, the Vernal Pool setback have been destroyed by the Shaker Heights development. There's a huge stockpile of boulders and a very large loam pile and just general grading that have occurred in some of the peripheral areas because that was not established under the Shaker Hill. So we're not proposing, we're proposing to utilize the areas that have been disturbed prior to no further encroaching alternative. And so because of that condition to meet or exceed, I think, we feel that the directional buffer actually provides a better level of support for the riparian and Vernal Pool habitat. We've submitted documents to the city supplemented by our certified wetland scientists, the testing to that. So we're proposing to preserve this large internal wetland complex as a directional buffer. It provides a greater surface, surface area as to just to having the one-hundred-foot area. So it's a greater footprint of protection. It also is more appropriate, given the site conditions, where we have disturbances and grading on either side of the Vernal Pool. The the reptiles and species that utilize this corridor primarily the terrain and the environmental conditions that they, they live in exist in the wetlands and the riparian areas, may do not exist in the areas that have been disturbed for prior construction. So we're proposing a permanent open space with conservation restrictions that will supplement, that will provide the equivalent Vernal Pool buffer as to what, so one-hundred-foot just general buffer at the town, current city, current recognizes to support our request for that conditional use permit. We met again. As Tim said, the Conservation Commission, I was at the meeting with the presentation, they were in agreement, in my opinion, although I don't have a report from them to hand you, that they agreed with our approach to this buffering condition and they did not have any significant feedback or opposition to this approach. Otherwise, there's a CUP for steep slopes, which I can just state that it's related to a short, some, which was approved in two thousand and seventeen. There's a short section of road where the terrain is over the critical slope, which is fifteen to twenty-five percent of leaving this area. And we are required to build a road through that to, over constrained, because we have a, we have to build the road for fire protection. You can't have a debt. Once you exceed fifteen hundred or a thousand, you have to, we have to construct the loop road for fire protection. And we have constraints with the wetland complex to avoid some minimization. And then this sloped area, which we have designed our plans to minimize those impacts by a few different things, which I've submitted in writing. You all have your packages, and I can get into that necessary. Mainly making the roads as steep as possible, as steep as practicable to allow the roads to follow the terrain, to minimize cuts and fills, you know, things of that nature. Minimizing road widths, minimizing maximizing the slope. So if we have a cut or a fill slope, we're going to make it three to one or two to one, rather than lay it out flat. And also, if you should note that it's a requirement of this project for your assurance. So during the construction phase, this will require a, call this, I'm sure you've heard of it, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. But it's really the EPA NOI process, which affects any project of over one acre, but this project obviously falls into that. There'll be a required monitoring period. So during construction, the contractor will need to maintain a record of his onsite in the trailer for city or EPA to come to the site and check them. But basically, record any rainfall event that occurs over a certain, like a quarter or half inch, they have to check the site, make sure the silt fences. Everything is intact. There's nothing leaving the site going into the wetlands. So that, the, the construction phase will also be obviously monitored carefully. Finally, this is a phase, a proposed project to be phased in three phases. The first phase being primarily this front, and I have a plan showing it, primarily this front area, phase one. The second phase being the construction of, this is called Sky View, Sky View Lane. Back to basically where the pump station is and the construction of the Rocky Bird Circle. So that's primarily the second phase. And the third phase is to build chickeny circle and then continue through the loop road and the Oriole. Fifty units triggers the gate. We're going to do, we're going to build the, the second fire access. We're doing that in the first phase. Thirty-four plus or minus units triggers the mitigation for the highway. We have received the updated D O T approval. For this, district has issued an updated approval. Right around the thirty-second minute, thirty-third minute, they're required to start construction of turning lane. Basically, it's an eastbound, an eastbound left turn lane on Endicott Street. That has to start at the thirty-second unit and has to be completed by the issuance of the thirty-six unit of the CO. The, the DOT has to be satisfied that those improvements are as per design, which is, like I said, it's basically, it's a, it's a split widening to create a left turn lane pocket headed, headed eastbound up the hill. When formerly, the original project only was required to have with higher traffic, only needed to have a bypass shoulder. But, so we're going above and beyond for this project. So that is the off-site improvements. And I will leave it out there. That's hopefully have covered the major topics. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicants, members of the board? Yes.
I'm looking at the site plan that was dated two thousand and seventeen from your keys surveying.
Yes.
And I do see some wetlands that were delineated on that plan. And I see where some of those wetlands are being obliterated essentially. Are you saying that they were already compromised? For example, in the southeast corner, I'm seeing a wetland that was identified and delineated in two thousand and seventeen. And now Ren Lane goes right through.
That's right.
So was that compromised already, that wetland?
Yeah, that wetland in particular was the clubhouse. You can actually see it here on the original, it was a clubhouse amenity for Shaker Heights. And that was excavated into a slope there. Can you see it here?
Yeah. So that, that got destroyed with the
So that was an upland originally. And then when they built the clubhouse, they dug into the intercepted season. Abandoned the site, you develop the hydrology through the water table, man-made wetland. We are proposing mitigation for the wetland impacts, I failed to say. So the D E S process, which we're working through with Dean and the Conservation Commission as well, they've identified a few projects where we're investigating how we can, we can use this mitigation money, which is basically a payment in lieu of mitigation due to the site conditions. It's not feasible to restore, repair, or create new wetlands. So therefore, the D E S determines it's we pay into a fund that's utilized by the state in the city. So we're looking to and we're, we'll finalize ways we can, with Dean and the conservation groups, we can use that here for some local projects. That's, that's in process.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I got a question for you. Where are you going to stockpile snow removals?
No, the snow. There is sidewalks. There's a, basically, there's a whole, this whole road is open on one side. It's open, there's no curbing there. So we, they would windrow the snow along this road. And then they would have, oh, there's open space areas. For instance, there's an open space area here that's at grade. And they could plow the snow into these large open spaces, not the actual protected area in the middle, but the non-protected open space areas. There's a bath, and there's also common amenities. I didn't mention it needs, on the interior of the circles, there's amenities such as playgrounds, gazebo type things, but there's sufficient level of storage space that constitutes no storage. And that's shown on the site plans. Those areas are defined on this package. But no snow storage in the opens, the central conservation piece, obviously.
Any other questions? Mr. St. Clair.
These, I can't tell, do these have garages or is it?
Yes, I didn't, the units, they're all, I believe, two-story units with garage first floor and then main level. Some, some may have first floor living space. I submitted a.
Okay, then that's fine.
But they all have garage under, and then they have one parking space minimum in the front and then the garage under with.
Extra, extra storage place? I had to ask, you know, I had to ask that.
It's gonna be up the road.
Be up the road? You heard that quote. But there is, so there is, okay, that's fine.
We don't have any dedicated accessory storage sheds.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. Up the road.
We have a typical two-bedroom, front elevation view with your one-car garage per unit, then the parking in front, obviously, and that's a duplex unit. And we have similar style, simple, to single family.
Pretty nice.
These units are walkouts. The grade allows for terrain purposes. The bad units will have a walkout basement level. And some of the units will have a porch where, where the setbacks allow. Some of the units do not have porch access. Only really the ones, the perimeter units that were affected by the buffer.
So you're not building these as they're ordered? You're just gonna build them and then sell them? Or do you have to wait for the, somebody said, I wanna buy a unit, then you build it for them?
Dave Jennings.
This is intended to be built out in phases. So we probably will build phase one for us and build them and then sell them as a bill. So I don't intend to build one at a time.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, sensing none. We're gonna open a public hearing at eight twenty-six. Are there any members of the public, any abutters that wish to be heard regarding this development? Mr. Moore, is there anybody in Zoom land?
There's nobody that has indicated online that we should speak for against application.
Okay, last call. Is there anybody here that would like to be heard? Okay, close the public hearing at eight twenty-six. We have the staff report, please.
Yes. Staff is in favor of the board granting the waivers that have been asked for. And also the CUPs. These are essentially identical to what was approved by the planning board in 2017. And they have already received provision of variances from the zoning board as well. A couple of things that I do wanna point out to you. We still need to review the condo documents. We don't review them for the legalities of the various aspects for, of having a condominium, but rather, we look at it from the standpoint of the things that we're interested in concerning things in the city. And we are looking at things like, what's the plan for trash? What's the plan for the fire alarms? And those kinds of things and how they're going to maintain their stormwater structures. I will point out to you specifically, under 2B, F and G, that the condo documents must clearly state that all streets in development will remain private and the city will not provide any services or maintenance. And then G is an application of that in that the streets must be constructed to our standards, even though they will remain private and will be eventually owned by the condominium association. And again, we don't provide any services. And there are some agreements that need to be reached with Public Works concerning some inspection agreements and those kinds of things. We are recommending approval of the waivers and CUPs.
Okay. Any questions for staff regarding this development?
Yes, there is. There is a sidewalk.
Sidewalk is already out there, isn't it?
There is a sidewalk to the site on Endicott Street. And they are constructing sidewalk, continuous sidewalk on Endicott Street to the extent of their front property. And then they will have sidewalk on their internal streets as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? So you don't need, we don't, I don't believe we'd need separate motions for each waiver if.
No, I think if you make a, a, a motion statement that includes the waivers and the CUPs, and I think that would be appropriate.
Is there anybody aboard that would want to separate out any one of these waivers? For a possible denial or anything? So who would, would anyone like to make a motion so that these nice people can get on with their?
I'll go ahead and make a motion for PL 2021-009SP, 0100SU, 0101CUP, 0102CUP, 0103CUP, 0104CUP, 0106CUP. And again, is that a typo? Another 0106CUP for the perimeter buffer for Endicott Street to approve that with the waiver request from 75 to 40 feet setbacks in the SFR District, taking into consideration the Planning Department's recommendations specifically for 2B, F and G, about the streets to remain private, but to be built to public standards and for review of all condominium documents.
Motion made, is there a second? Second by Mr. St. Clair. I think it's possible that the cluster setback should have been identified as 0105, because there's a series there, starting with one. So there's one, two, three, four, six, and six. No? We don't know. Well, it seems logical to me that can't be two with the same number, right?
We could change that on the.
Okay. Motion made.
Okay, so the motion is amended then to, instead of 0106CUP for the cluster setback, that would be 0105CUP for the cluster. And as I stated before, 0106CUP for the perimeter buffer.
All right, thank you. Is that acceptable to the second amendment? Charlie?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All right, sensing none. All those in favor of approval, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Looks like it's unanimous. Okay, get her finished this time.
Thank you, folks, very much.
Okay. Wish everybody, I don't wanna approve this thing again, for God's sake. Glad you could join us, Michael. I guess with Michael here, just for the record. Scott's gonna, yeah, all right. Thank you.
From the last. Thank you.
Okay. PL 2021-0112SU, 36 Endicott Street, Leisure Time Rentals LLC, proposal to subdivide one lot into two. That seems like very basic division right there. We need a motion to accept this. The mo, is the application in order and ready for acceptance?
Yes, it is. Motion to accept. Motion to accept.
Second. A motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting, raise your hand. Opposed, motion is unanimous. Okay. Have the applicant here. Hello there.
Hi, good evening. Rusty Berthely, property owner.
Hello, Rusty.
How you doing?
Long time.
Been a while.
So what you doing here?
My proposal is to take 36 Endicott Street, Alpen Rose Plaza, which is, excuse me, currently an RV park, shopping plaza and mini golf course, and turn it into two lots. Lot one consisting of the plaza and mini golf. Lot two consisting of only the RV park.
Okay. That seems reasonable. Any, there'll be no actual changes to the land, only to the boundaries?
Yeah, just drawing a line across the, on the plan and that's about it. Everything else stays the same.
Any questions for Mr. Berthely? All right. Let's open the public hearing at eight thirty-four. Are there any abutters, or members of the public, which should be heard regarding Mr. Berthely's proposal? Anyone online, Mr. Moore? All right, let's close the public hearing at eight thirty-five. And we'll hear from the staff.
This is pretty straightforward. As, as the applicant mentioned, they're essentially drawing a line down a portion of their property to create the two lots. There are some driveways that cross this, or will cross this new boundary line. They will need to go to zoning board for the parking lot setbacks. Parking lot pavement needs to be five feet from a property line. And in this case, they're not proposing to change any of the pavement. So the pavement will cross the new property line. So then they'll need to get a variance for that. And they will need to do some easements on the deeds to allow cars to pass to and fro from these, these two lots. The traffic flow will not change. And those are the, the water department needs a couple of different shut offs. And I do wanna emphasize that the RV park portion of this is a seasonal RV park. Water is, is not installed deep enough in the ground to allow winter use. So it'll be shut off in a utility portion of the, of the plaza building. And then it'll be basically May 1st through October 30th type situation.
What about fire suppression if there's no water?
The pumper truck will bring it with them.
Is that true, chief?
I think so.
Okay. Right from Ohio, it's right there.
Right across the street anyhow, from the RV park.
It's, that's true. It's not exactly a long drive. Okay. Any questions for staff? All right. It's the pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve PL 2021-0112SU, 36 Endicott Street East.
That's what you made, seconded by Mr. St. Clair. Any discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay. On. PL. Yes, you're welcome. Good seeing you again. PL 2021-0113SP, 18 Endicott Street North. North Water Marine, a proposal to disassemble building number five being replaced building number 12. Make more conforming and upgrade drainage. And there's a waiver requested for landscaping, lighting plan. And we do need a motion to accept this before we go into it. Is the application in order?
Yes, to do acceptance.
All right. One care to make a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Motion made, is there a second? Motion made by the chief, seconded by Mr. St. Clair. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, it's been accepted. We'll hear from the applicant.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Matt Banger, Roth and Roth, and here representing North Water Marine Realty LLC. On the application to basically take an existing building down that is in structural failure, that actually is permitted and is in process now. Cause of that issue is an undermining of an embankment slope from roof drainage coming off the roof, undermining the slope, which then turned undermount, undermined the foundation. Cause one of the main, two of the main structural elements in the building to drop and before was, building was reviewed by three separate structural engineers and all three recommended its removal as a safety issue. So that building, the original intent was to take that, disassemble that building, take it down and move it across the street, across Channel Lane, and reassemble it in the position currently occupied by building 12. That rack storage building currently is able to house 54 boats. However, the structure and design of it is for dated boats. It was built some 35, 40 years ago. Or shorter. At its end. The, that building is also in fairly bad physical condition. So the intent was to deconstruct what is called Building 5A. The building is in structural failure and move it over and reassemble it in a smaller footprint on the new lot or on the building 12 lot with a slight adjustment in its position. That adjustment is set such that we reduce the non-conformance in the setback by approximately 750 square feet. In the process of evaluating the costs associated with deconstructing a building and re-erecting it, we came to the conclusion or the recognition that it's the same price to build a brand-new building as it is to deconstruct this whole building and put a new one up or put it back up. So the decision was made to go ahead and with that, we pick up new construction technique, all the certifications that'll come with it. And the building will be current warranted, good, you know, good aesthetic proper quality. So with the decision has been made to, instead of deconstructing 5A, 5B, it is being demolished. And then we are out for bids to obtain a building of the same footprint to fit on the space that we had allocated, moving 5A over to the building 12 position. Few facts that I'd like to share. This move, the function of this building is going to be to move service and boat reconditioning functions from the existing building two. This building down on the waterfront. Will be taking all of the storage of basically everything that's gonna, is coming out of that building. And that is going to be presented in a future site plan application. And those functions are all going to be moved up to the new building 12 and into the building 11. So all of the, any of the service functions that were going on in the building two will now be moved across the street and over to to the new building 12. That will reduce the traffic. That will reduce the traffic coming across Channel Lane, the need for crossing because boats will be brought over to building twelve instead of brought over to one and then brought back across for storage. Cause all this, the storage for those boats is currently on the opposite side of Channel Lane. The net, there will be a net reduction in, uh, storage positions of thirty three plus or minus depending on how the, uh, we can configure the racks, the rack storage that's going to be proposed in the new building twelve. They give you the math, the existing building twelve holds fifty four boats. We are contemplating twenty one to go into the new position or into the new building. So in addition, we will be reducing the total boat count. That is really functionally that we, just of what we're doing, the movement of the building itself, the existing footprint. In order to service current boats, we need to slide this new building, uh, to the south by about, uh, by about twelve feet. In order to get a sixty five foot separation between buildings, between building eleven and building twelve. The point behind that is when a fork truck with a current thirty foot boat is backed out of one of the two of these buildings, they need that kind of distance to swing the boats. So that's the reason that it has been moved off of its footprint and slid down. The access and egress points of the new building twelve will be on the east side of the, of the structure right on the cha- off the Channel Lane or off the Thurston Lane, uh, corridor. And the point of this building is essentially that we're going to come into the building and do boat service, reconditioning, washing, uh, and winterizing will occur in this building. And then they will come back out and go up Channel Lane to the storage facilities that are far back in the back of the property. The section to the west here is where we propose that there will be some additional boat storage, mostly work and process type storage. Some low racks. And again, there was about twenty one boats was what we've envisioned putting in that, into that position. As part of this proposal, there will be some drainage issues addressed that have been, uh, had been neglected. The first is the combing length, the, there are floor drains existing in the building twelve structure. And there's boat washing that goes on in that structure. That is connect, has a, a sewer connection that needs to be reapplied for and, and approved. And the issue with that is, is there's a, uh, sanitary line that also connects into that, up that F one structure. So we, there's no way to address the oil-water separation with a commingled sanitary flow going into it. So the decision was made that we will abandon the toilet facilities, the sanitary facilities that are currently in building eleven. We construct new sanitary facilities in the new building twelve. The then a oil-water separator will be installed on the new, on the existing building twelve and the sewer connection will be officially made and applied for and properly done. Next, there is boat washing activity that goes on in this macadam that's out between these two buildings. Currently, that's not being properly, uh, the drainage of that is not being properly addressed. So what will be placed there is a, uh, stormwater system drain that is valvable. In the case where they're washing boats, it will be valves such that it diverts to a sediment tank and an oil-water separator and then subsequently out to sewer. When the boat washing functions are not occurring, will be valve into position where stormwater falls, goes into the drain and goes out into the normal stormwater distribution. Now let, uh, people like me, civil engineer discuss more about how that function will, uh, be properly done. In addition, there will be a new sewer connection required for the proposed sanitary that's going to go into building twelve. That will come in after the oil-water separator from the boat wash base, boat wash area. So we'll go through water that's being processed for boat washing will come down, go through its collection tank, go through the oil-water separator. Up to sanitary and the sewer, the sanitary coming off the twelve will intercept that line after the oil-water separator. So we can ma- manage to accommodate both. And that shall, I think that, and then there'll be also drainage in eleven or twelve rather, and that will also go to the oil-water separator off the sanit- the sanitary. So other than cumbersome drainage concept, cumbersome involves drainage concept which is, addresses all of the requirements that we believe that have been, uh, that need to be. It's fairly straightforward. Tear down existing boat rack, put a comparable building to the current five A backup on its adjusted footprint. Function will be reducing the boat storage and to go to service function, which will take the flow of boats into the building out and then up to the storage facilities in the back of lot ten.
Do you have anything to add on? Like civil engineer, and I think he covered everything. As he said, there's a rain in building eleven, the existing service building that co-mingles the, the bathroom waste and the floor drain. So the bathroom's going to come out and then we'll put a oil-water separator on that right between at the northeast corner of that building. It'll be right off there. And then it will be built on the existing sewer line coming out of the building. And then a separate oil-water separator in the middle of the of the yard, the asphalt between the two buildings. And that will take wash water from the inside of the new structure and also from the concrete pad that's outside. So they'll have the, uh, the two new wash areas right there. The, um, the water on the concrete pad, it's going to go into a regular catch basin, which will have kind of a, it's a custom valving essentially. Got the idea from a company called Safety Drain that has, uh, it's for spill prevention. So if you have a catch basin and you have a spill of some fluids, whatever, you can valve that shut so that doesn't go into the storm drainage system. So what we're going to do is use that except they'll customize it a little more so that typically it's open. So stormwater will just flow right down through in the catch basin and then out as normal. But when they're washing the boats, they'll turn the valve to shut it off up above and that will go just from there into the oil-water separator and then off into the sewer. So we need a discharge permit for that and for, um, for building eleven, the existing building. Others than that, the new bathroom will go into building twelve and there'll be a new, um, sewer line that comes in, as Matt said, downstream of that oil-water separator. There's an existing well on the site and that's where the water service will come from on that right there. And all the normal other utilities will access from existing connections. And that's, that's about it. It's a pretty flat site right in there. Not changing that, just sort of adding a few more.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Okay, starting with Chief.
Yeah. Just, I did, just to paraphrase a little bit of this here. So for this phase of the project that you're trying to do, we're, we're removing a building and such a building, a new one. Okay. What is the, on the new building, I only saw the elevation to the, I, uh, it appears to be ten feet higher than what's standing?
The current, what we're proposing is thirty five feet, which is the existing structure's height.
Okay, that, that's my, that's half my question. What is the size difference on the two buildings? I just don't see it in my notes from what's standing there now.
So the existing structure is the existing rack structure is fifty five by eighty four.
Okay, so.
The new structure is sixty by
Okay.
Both structures are plus or minus thirty five, thirty, I think it's thirty five and a half feet tall.
Yeah.
We're not proposing the height.
No real height change. Okay.
All right. Yes.
I apologize if I'm asking you to repeat yourself, but so, uh, building five B will be demolished. It's out of the picture.
It's on its way out the door now.
And, and, okay, and five A is going to be disas- disassembled, reassembled?
Nope.
No.
Five A remains.
Remains.
It's a, uh, it's actually kind of a, a unique, like Michael's back here, uh, the architect from Dennis Myers, it's a unique wood frame structure.
Okay.
That we're going to preserve.
Okay.
And, um, that will be.
Michael, can you kind of give us?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, Mike McKeown from Dennis Myers, the architects, Manchester, Hampshire. Thanks for having us tonight. Uh, five A is a single story, um, wood truss building that's clear span. That's been used to house boats in the past and it will continue to have that use going forward. The intention is to renovate the building, um, in the spring with another application that's separate from this. But the idea is that it will remain as it stands in here.
So what we're looking at these elevations, this will be a totally new, newly constructed building, not five B.
Assuming we can manage to get a building in the our lifetime.
And, um, Matt and Pete recovered the design and the location of the building. The idea going forward, as Matt mentioned, is to stay within very similar height and aesthetic for the site. However, you're going to see some coloration and we're intending to use an insulated metal panel system that will allow us to effectively insulate that building and maintain temperatures, um, throughout the year. The building that's currently there that's just as panels on both sides.
Mr. St. Clair.
I'm probably going to repeat, have you repeat yourself because I'm trying to, I have a very nice, uh, diagram here. I'm trying to watch everything, but I just want to be clear that we're not talking about these front buildings, but I just, it might understand that your plans for those buildings, the height for any new buildings is not going to exceed the height you have there now, or if it does, how much?
The, the, the application we're discussing tonight, there is no change in height.
No, I know that, but I'm just.
The application that is pending.
Yeah.
For, we went through, uh, technical review yesterday on.
Okay.
There will be a height change in that and that height change will be approximately twenty feet.
Twenty feet. Okay. Right across the board?
Right across the board. However, the, those in, really not wanting to get too far into that application, there will be a substantial change in the configuration of that, that, those structures. Currently, they run parallel to the channel. They will be turned perpendicular to the channel and opening, open lanes will be created between them.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll go through that on the
Any other questions?
Yeah.
I've got a question on your operational controls for your swap between oil-water separator.
Yes.
And the sanitary sewer. What are you going to put in place? Cause as someone who's had experience with that, it's a disaster waiting to happen.
Oh, so.
We end up, people just forgot about it, ignored it. We ended up taking that system out and going to inviper beads, which when they sense petroleum products, they swell and completely plug the, the unit.
Okay.
And that was mandated by another talent that I dealt with.
Okay.
In a previous career.
The honest, you know, direct answer to your question is it would be a procedural, um.
It's just a matter, you're going to have a checklist for the, the guy standing there and you hope he follows the checklist.
Yes.
That's exactly what
More so than
My concern is we ran into.
Yeah, more so than hope. It would be a, um, it would probably, you know, my recommendation to the ownership would be, it would be a job ending event if we're not followed and perceived behind the, the need for it. And then we could also put in place redundant checks on that in the procedure, the operational procedure, uh, to make sure that two people have to sign off on it before the water can be turned on. You know, some, we could go through some things like that and we're happy to do so.
You know, with that, I have a question. So what's to say that I'm washing a boat? And the last thing I do is the motor. We shut the water off, turn the valves back, but any oil or anything that I've washed off, the motor is sitting there on the pad. Next large rainfall washes it in. When it's going straight into the sewer, not through the separate. Since this is a wash pad and there can be remnants or stuff left there, why not just have a primary, construct the drainage from the wash facility to go into oil, uh, water separator?
The, you want to answer?
Well, yeah, I mean, you're still, you need to have a open basin essentially. It's outside. And so you're going to have to do something to shut off that basin. If you want to have a basin just strictly, for the washing to go through the oil-water separator and then into the sewer, that basin's going to be open. So if you're not going to, when you're not using it, when you're washing boats, you'll have to shut that off somehow. It's out in the open. So there has to be some type of, there has to be some type of system set up where you either shut off a basin that's directed only for washing or you can do this, you know, with it combined. And we just decided to go with that route. I mean, it's, I, to me, it's either, it's one or the other because it's not undercover. So there's going to be rainwater, like you say, and
I'm just wondering if there are other options that have been pointed out, like the beads that detect that petroleum contamination or not, or, but, okay.
Yeah.
There, there is.
We're, we're open to.
There is an option on this, uh, safe drain for a, an absorptive, uh, filter to be placed in it. And that could be a, a mitigator for that. Cause what you're talking about are trace amount, small amounts of oil, not a spell per se. And that could be a, uh, one of the ways of handling it.
And to speak to the remnants, I, I would think the ownership would procedurally have, uh, steps in place to wash down that pad such that there wouldn't be remnants there before the valve is open, uh, because certainly it would defeat the purpose if there's uh, sediment or anything hazardous on that.
I just wanted to hear it.
Yeah, we can put it in procedural. So there's a couple of ways we can address your, your comment.
Any other questions from members of the board? None. We'll open the public hearing nine oh one. Well, nine oh two, it's just James. Nine oh two PM. Are there any butters here that wish to be heard? Come right up.
Good evening. I'm not technically in a butter because we're across from the channel and I don't think that water allows you to be above, but fortunately we had heard uh, from the grapevine that, uh, the plan was being presented here. Um, as you all know, on July sixth, there was a pre-application presentation to you. And I think we all thought that's what was going to be happening tonight, but, um, my name's Jose Dematos. Let me start with that and I live at eleven ninety. Sure, Jose Dematos, last name is D E M A T O S. And I live at eleven ninety two Wears Boulevard and I own Channel Waterfront cottages and Wears Beach Convenience and Gifts. First, I like to say that I am all for rehabbing and rebuilding and improving properties and certainly understand the need to correct erosion issues. All this is needed at North Water Marine for sure. the need to correct erosion issues. All this is needed at North Water Marine for sure. May I respectfully request by a show of hands of the board members who have had a chance to go to the property and actually see what's being proposed? Three or four? Um, I know I had a real tough time notifying affected property owners and reviewing it all myself, as it wasn't until last Wednesday that we received the electronic plan and I thought it was the big plan. As you know, as I mentioned, on July 6th, North Water Marine presented a pre-application presentation to this board. Up until last week, we all thought that's what was going to be presented tonight. But we're only here for the proposed building 12 and 5A and 5B and 11 and bathrooms and, um, this is not what the application was for. Here we are for the proposed building 12 to be replaced as the application says right here, disassembled building 5 and reinstall it in number 12's position. Well, today, 5B was completely demolished. It was torn apart, bent up. And so that can't happen. That's not what the application is asking to do. That cannot be done. It cannot be reinstalled as proposed. Also, the fact that it was simply storage racks, not a brand new building for service and recon. It was a storage building just holding racks, not a, a brand new building. Uh, the present footprint, if this building was able to be taken down and sat in the same position of number 12, it would exceed it by 550 square feet, just as the application tells you. Since the changing of ownership from Thurston's to North Water Marine, significant added uses have occurred with increase in the number of rental boats being introduced and a valet service which had not been there before with an unknown number of boats, with talks of operating up to 300 additional boats to be valeted. This has already, already made increased traffic both in the channel and incredibly on channel lane, a very, very serious safety hazard. At what point is this entire project looked at as brand new? Thus, all the assumed grandfathered legal terms protecting lawful pre-existing non-conforming use of land should all be reviewed and scrutinized. A waiver request should not be granted for the landscaping plan as the affected area of work, although impervious, is certainly proposed to be larger in area by over 550 square feet than the building 12. I won't, I would ask that the board reject this application and wait for a complete finalized plan with all necessary state agency approvals to operate what they plan on doing. I thank you for your time and consideration for this very serious matter to the city of Oconia, to Weers Beach and all boaters on Lake Winnipesaukee. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Are there any other butters that wish to be heard? Members of the public? Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, my name is Jack Hutton, H U T T O N. We own property at 58 Channel Lane and also 62 Channel Lane. Prior to this season, we never had an issue in terms of access for the people who rent boat slips from us or anyone else. Ever since the North Water operation has taken over, they have made Channel Lane a fork truck ramp. And for approximately 40 years, the Thurston's put, uh, boats in the water at the, um, north end of the property. There's a boat ramp there. And if you look at this proposed thing that I've seen, they're going to expand the ramps they're using now, which really weren't used in the past. And already, uh, there should be a number of emails and things have been sent to you from people who have been affected by this. Uh, if you approve this project as it's laid out now, you're simply seeding Channel Lane to North Water as a fork truck ramp. And you've got fork trucks going up and down Channel Lane with boats 10 to 20 feet in the air with cars backed up, traffic backed up. Uh, there were some pictures circulated this week, I think to the members of this, uh, committee that, uh, showed, you know, kids riding by on bicycles with this going on. So you really need to look at this whole project before you start improving or approving just individual buildings.
Okay.
Apparently the city is somewhat concerned because they pretty much are abandoning Channel Lane and, uh, getting as far away from any potential liabilities they can. They said they're no longer going to support Channel Lane even for trash pickup. And that's a different issue and not anything to be considered here. I have no problem whatsoever with these people expanding their operation and improving it and whatever. But you do have a serious safety issue on Channel Lane right now. If you ignore it, then somebody is going to, uh, either be liable. I don't know if it's the Department of Transportation or who. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We, for the record, we have, uh, an email from Mike Hutton, with some photographs attached, colored photographs. And we have, uh, another email from Jack Barhut and then it looks like this is, uh, in, on behalf of Marine Properties LLC. Is that right?
Okay.
So it's all the same entity. All right. Any other members of the public or butters that wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Ashley Anderson. Um, I am a condo and dock slip owner at Winnipesaukee Landing, as well as the president of the condo association of Winnipesaukee Landing, which consists of eight condo units as well as 13 dock slips. Winnipesaukee Landing is located at 1184 Weers Boulevard, which is directly across, across the Weers Channel of North Water Marine. Uh, I just want to mention that I've also owned a boat at this property for the past several years and I am aware of how busy the channel can get, especially on weekends and holidays. However, with, um, the proposed increased number of valet slips and rental boats at North Water Marine, I'm very concerned of how this will impact the boat traffic and safety of the Weers Channel. There are many inexperienced boat operators renting from various marinas, not just North Water Marine, it is across all marinas on the lake. Um, and I've heard, but I have personally witnessed on numerous occasions throughout this summer, many rental boats and valet slip renters from North Water Marine, holding up boat traffic in the channel, traveling sideways and even going backwards down the channel. Trying to return their boats back to the marina. I would highly recommend that a professional and relevant case study to be performed on the proposed expansion and increase of the rent, uh, the rental boats and valet slips and how this will impact the safety and traffic of other boaters in this area.
Thank you. Just, uh, so you know, though, th- this board's jurisdiction ends at the water line. We, we, the, the Channel Lane and the land portion of it is before us, but we do not have any, um, regulatory powers over the channel or the, or the water itself. That, that's the state.
Okay, understand. I just wanted to make that aware of everybody that it is going to increase whether or not, I know that I'm on the other side, but, that the boat traffic in that channel is definitely going to be impacted.
We understand your concern. Are there any other members of the public or butters that wish to be heard? Do we have anyone online, Mr. Mora?
There's nobody online, sir.
Yes.
I make a point of clarification.
Sure, of course.
One of the comments that were made, I believe, um, the initial gentleman, the intent of this reconstruction of, or removal of this building, and again, when we looked at the finances which came in after the application was filed, it became apparent that it was more economical to build a new than to demolish or deconstruct and rebuild. Wanted to make that point. Secondly, so there's no sleight of hand here. We're very openly saying it just made more sense. We're not asking for a bigger footprint. We're not asking for anything different, just to put a new building up instead of a reconstructed building. Secondly, um, there was a, I think a, a bit of misunderstanding. The function that we're going to remove on building one, which is the wood structure building that's right on the water, are all service and storage functions that are currently existing down there. Right now, they've got parts, they've got oil, they've got batteries. All of that is going to be moved up to buildings 11 and 12. So it's going to take that out. In addition, there is some service function that is currently going on in this building. All of those functions will be moved over to buildings 11 and 12. That result of it will be a reduction in the amount of flow across Channel Lane. We're cognizant of, of the congestion and what goes on on Channel Lane and everything we are working towards. And when we do the subsequent presentation or the second application we put in, we'll be addressing how to, what's going on on Channel Lane and how you're proposing to mitigate those issues. So this proposal, this specific proposal does create a net reduction in the amount of traffic going across Channel Lane. These would be, we're reducing the function in this building one, uh, building two. And we are reducing the number of boats that are physically stored in this building. So even if we did nothing other than reduce this, the number of boats, that's that many fewer boats that are going to be coming across Channel Lane. And we'll get into, you know, the function of the boats, the storage and the valet service and all that will be covered in the next application, which is serviced here and they're very, very specific things we're posing to mitigate traffic issues on Channel Lane. And, you know, again, this Channel Lane is an easement. It's not an owned rite. So North Water Marine owns this piece of property along with the railroad and just easement across that property. So just a couple of points of clarification I wanted to throw in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There any other questions? Yes, Mr. McWilliam.
I have a question for Director Dean. Uh, Channel Lane, is, is that a designated city road, a private lane? I'm just now hearing about an easement. Can you clarify how that?
It's not a public, it is not a public accepted street.
It's. Doesn't meet the standards, I don't think.
It doesn't. Uh, part of what is viewed as Channel Lane, it's the pavement part. Part of it is on the railroad right away. Part of it is on the individual property owners as you go along down the street. It, it, it changes ownership as you go away from Endicott Street.
So North Water Marine and, uh, and/or the railroad actually owns the road and.
Own it and there is an easement.
An easement for traffic.
In existence for the people who are further down the, the road to be able to cross, crossover. Yeah.
So that has to be, that easement always has to be open. Yes, no?
You have to be, it has to be available to pass. But obviously there can be temporary obstruction in the road. I mean, you, if you back out of your driveway into the street that your driveway is on, if somebody else is coming along, they can't pass down the street. So I mean, it's just basic con, same basic concept, but.
Of course, but not that I'm saying this is happening, but somebody couldn't just say, I need this spot here for two hours because I'm doing something.
Well.
Well, there are, there are delineated parking spaces. Again, they're, they're, they're on pavements that's shared by multiple entities.
Charlie, can you save the questions for the staff report? Because we're still doing a public hearing right now.
Yep.
Jose, did you want to say something?
I just have a, a quick question on procedure. Would we be a butters across from the channel? Because none of us have been notified. So I don't know. So no.
The, the, the way the state, it's very strange, the way the state defines the butters. Uh, you, you are not in a butter because it's a lake. If it was an actual river, you, you would be, but channel, uh, the, the, the channel is, is part of Winnipesaukee Lake. So it's, it's, you're, you're not technically, however, I, I mean, we, we publish our public hearings and, and everything in multiple places. I encourage you to check the city website often.
Thank you. We're, we're definitely, you know, going to be proactive on all of it moving forward. Just a little clarification on Channel Lane. It's my understanding that North Water owns 12 feet of the road and the state owns 30 feet. And that North Water Marine has to petition the state to have a lease of the road, 30 feet of the road to operate this forklift in the street. Right now, they only have a lease to cross the railroad tracks. And the notion of relocating the building and being less traffic across the railroad tracks doesn't make sense because you have to cross that railroad tracks to get to this new building, uh, the entire time. And I just want to go back to my premise in the beginning that the building is not on the applic, a new building is not on the application tonight. It's a reassemble and a relocation, and that's not what has happened because it's been demolished today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Any other members of the public or butters that wish to be heard? Sensing none, we'll close the public hearing at 9:18. Here from staff.
Uh, staff recommends approval. We don't really have anything unusual. I, I do want to talk about a couple of notes, a couple of issues that came up tonight. City is, is well aware of what the issue with Channel Lane is in terms of its use. Who owns it and easements and those kinds of things. I, I know that Channel Lane is one of the streets that has been notified by DPW that certain services will be ending or if they haven't ended already, including trash pickup and plowing and those kinds of things. This project uh, because of its proximity to the water, uh, is subject to DES approval. The next phase that we will be hearing about next couple of months probably will also require DES, uh, applications and as has been noted by the chair, anything to do with the water is, is in the jurisdiction of DES. I, I
Or Marine Patrol.
Or Marine Patrol, but in terms of in terms of permitting activities, uh, it is, it is DES enforcement of some of those activities would be Marine Patrol. I'm not trying to pass buck. It's just the reality of the situation that if there is a concern about boat traffic on channel, on the channel, Weers Channel, then those issues need to be addressed with DES as part of this application process, which is underway. You, you can make your comments, uh, by letters or there's a, there's a website interface, et cetera. So it, it's relatively easy, easy to do. And I, I certainly would encourage those on either side of the channel up and down to, uh, to make those comments, uh, where they will do the most good, you know, the, the, where the land ends and the water begins, we, we end our jurisdiction and then DES takes over and it's, it's, um, it, it, it's just the way it is.
So you're recommending then that we approve this?
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 we, we know there's another application coming. You know, there's another application coming. I know there's another application coming. We, we've talked with the applicant. And that applic, next application is going to be, uh, much more extensive, it's much more comprehensive and we'll get into some of the details that, that have been subject of some of the comments, uh, tonight. And, and yes, uh, the applicant was here earlier in summer with a, with a conceptual plan, which outlined the whole thing and, you know, I, I, I get the confusion. I, I understand that. Uh, and I, I apologize if, if that was confusing, but, um, the, the, the overall benefit here of this part of the plan, it is, is, is to the good and the reason, I don't believe this was stated earlier, but maybe it was the reason the building five needs to come down is because the embankment between building 5B and the water is failing. The only way, the only practical way for the property owner to get to that embankment to make repairs is, is to have 5B, building 5B out of the way. And so I, I have been out there and inspected the in, in embankment and if, if that were to, uh, And if, if that were to collapse, which. I don't believe that it's in imminent danger of doing, but. It could be, and if that were to occur, that would be very bad for the channel. So this is what they're trying to, they're trying to be proactive on the embankment. The only way to get to the embankment is to have building five B. Out of the way so that they can get cranes and et cetera and equipment in there where the building is currently. And work on that embankment. I, I, the, the new building that they're going to build, which will become building twelve. Is slightly bigger, but it is more conforming from a setback standpoint. So we, we view that as a positive. So that's a long way of saying, yes, we recommend approval.
There any questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Chaney.
Could, could we encourage the applicant to at least review the idea of a more automatic system? I too have hesitancy. So, so I would ask that, that staff at least discuss the subject. The other thing I would ask is, for the cost of some postage, could we notify the people across the channel? Like the other abutters. I know it's not easy, but this is big. And, and I think it wouldn't be. A, a, a terrible drain on, on staff or the city's coffers to. Send them notifications and copies of plans, et cetera. I, I. I, I appreciate the request. The, the issue with a butter notification is. When you make an exception for one application. Then you're setting yourself up for the continual exceptions for future and subsequent applications. And I think you have to ask the question of where do you draw the line? If someone does something on Parkers Park Road, do they have to notify somebody at Weir's Boulevard because they're across the lake? And under the state law, the answer is no. However, I understand what you're saying. There is a fairly large condominium building. There's a couple of different condominiums right across the wind. But there's one fairly large one that is a, a substantial number of units. If. If you were comfortable with first class mailing to non-abutters as opposed to the registered mailing. And to the association, I don't think you have to make it to each individual. We could, we could do that. But to each individual association or, or. I, I would be open to that. That's fine. I appreciate the comment.
You could put that in as a note in the, on the staff, on the CUP. You could add it to the staff report.
We, we, we will.
Address that.
We will, we will take care of it when we have to mail out the next notification.
Yeah, I, because I, I could just follow up on that. Wasn't that the big island? Were all the people along the hills, houses right there across from the island, weren't they all yelling that they were a butters?
They were. Technically, they are not.
Okay. It just seems like I remember the zoning.
When you're on an island in a lake, you have no butters.
Right. And I remember, I remember the zoning board saying.
Also one hundred percent non-conforming lot because you have no street furniture. So.
I think we have to draw the line somewhere though, because like Dean said, the channel is actually part of the lake. And in the channel, it's different. So maybe we say something like direct a butters or any property owner within three hundred feet.
Well, three people cover those guys.
If I can jump in here, if the word of butter, I believe is defined.
Yes, it is.
In the statute. So we can't use the same language. It would, it would be not only confusing, but it, it would be contrary to the intent.
We could certainly notify interested parties.
Yes, I, I'm pretty sure this has been addressed through the ages. And that's why you have to make these meetings and the agendas public. So that the actual abutters, if they're concerned, they can talk to the other people that might be interested.
Right. We, that's why I think there's so many people here tonight is that they, they heard about it through the press or they. They watched the, the, the presentation that was made back several months ago. We also got emails, not only from the people that spoke this evening, but from other people that weren't here. That weren't a butters. There was Dennis Borg and he put his address as one nineteen Doc, I'm sure. In Guilford. Public certainly is, has a right to be heard before the board takes any action. But the public's notice is the, on the website and then the little message. I mean, the, the notice box outside of City Hall, I think that, that, those are the two places, that and the press.
Well.
But, but first class mail is not a difficult.
No, I understand that. But, but it, but what are we going to do? I mean, imagine if, well.
I think I get your point. Limiting what, you know, within three hundred feet or within sight. I, I'm fine with any of those. And I. Our people and we ought to.
Oh, I agree. I mean, I, I'm just saying that the current system worked. Because the public did find out about it and they were heard. Right. There are more people, there was quite a few of the objections were based upon increased boat traffic about which we can do nothing. Fair enough. That's Department of Safety and DES, so.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, like, since we have captive audience. The city has a feature on its website where you can sign up for notifications from the city. You can sign up for, for instance, planning board notifications or you could sign up for zoning board notifications. And that's all you're going to get. You're not going to get twenty seven emails a day and all that kind of stuff. And very easy to, when you get a notification about a planning board action that you don't care about to just hit delete. But it, it's just another mechanism that is a little more proactive. And from the standpoint of you will get notified about everything as opposed to you having to go to the website to check things out.
So that's the agenda center, right? You go to that.
Yeah, you go onto the thing and get your notification set up. Yep.
Okay, good point. Yes, Mr. McWilliam.
In regard to one of the pu- public comments, would it be necessary for the applicant to modify this application? Or at least update the project description since it's, seems to be in conflict. With what we actually heard in the presentation. The project description proposes to tear down and rebuild. Maintaining existing use. So I'm just wondering if there's a inconsistency with the application and the description. And what we're actually voting on.
I think the inconsistency is between what is being proposed tonight and what was presented as a conceptual. Back in the day.
No, there's actually discrepancy.
To tear down and put back up. The one building. Right. Reevaluated it.
Right.
Can we just correct that in our motion, whoever makes the motion? Understanding that because of economical reasons, it will not be the same building reconstructed. It will be new construction. The one, the one typed up.
Yeah.
The one says tear down and rebuild. The other one says disassemble. And reinstall. They've decided not to do.
We can, we can change the project description based on what we've heard tonight. I mean, it's, it's a public meeting. They have stated it publicly. You have all heard it. Recorded on Zoom and will be put on YouTube tomorrow and it will be there forever.
Enough whoever makes the motion.
Yes, if you make a motion, just say that to state what is, what has been presented tonight. That, that is what you're approving.
Any other questions for staff?
I have something I'd like to say. You stated a little bit ago that the, you know, plan is down the road. It did, there's an application that will be happening that with a much more comprehensive plan. And as Mr. Hutton stated, we should really know everything before we start piecemealing. These applications and approving them without having the full knowledge of the scope of the entire project. That's what, that's what bothers me.
I understand that. In this case. This, this, the two sides of the railroad track. So we have this, this proposal tonight for one side of the railroad track. And then we have the future proposal for the other side of the railroad track. The future proposal does not change anything on the opposite side of the, of the railroad track.
So it has no impact on the road.
The, the, the future proposal. Uses the road as the, as the business currently does now. Whether it's a greater impact. An equal impact or a lesser impact at this point in time, I don't know the answer to that question. But. They have stated that the purpose of what they're proposed tonight is to try to reduce some of the traffic. That's going across channel lane, not all of it. I mean, I don't want anyone to think the problem ends, but. You know, they're, they're, they're trying to, they're trying to minimize what's, what's occurring. Across channel lane, not necessarily what's, what's up and down. I mean, the, the other part that is, is not part of either. This proposal or the future one is all of the buildings that they have further down channel lane that are boat storage. That boats are coming and going out of there. Now and will continue, that will continue to do so. So. If, if, if I thought that. The second proposal was somehow going to change or undo what's being presented tonight. Then I, I, I would share your concern. But there really is that dividing line of. It's building eleven and building twelve and the, and the, and the boat wash. And then there's everything else that's going to go on in the property. Some of which has to occur because of. The, the embankment is, is, is failing. So that, that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
If I recall, in the conceptual. They were going to move the boat ramp. And they were going to. Build a, a, a structure that would allow. Raising and lowering boats on a crane-like structure, right? That overhangs.
Yes, there's a, there's a bulkhead proposed, yes.
All right. Is that part of this? This, this will be another proposal.
No, that's, that's part of the next proposal.
Okay. The other thing too, just to clarify it in my head. So the city's never accepted channel lane as a public street. Doesn't meet the requirements, right?
It's not a matter of it doesn't meet the requirements. It's just we've never, we don't own the land and we've never accepted the street.
All right, I understand that, but, but it's still a necessary way for people that live further down.
It's essentially a private driveway.
And so the easement that was referred to is to allow these other property owners access through.
Right.
The property, the applicant's property.
In easement for pass and repass, yes.
Okay. What about the concerns in one of the letters about the safety issues? Is that within our, our purview?
Yes, they are. But again, in, in, in this proposal tonight. They have presented to you that this is a decrease in traffic going across channel lane. Not necessarily up and down, but across channel lane. It may be. Incremental, it, it may not be, but that's what has been represented to you.
Okay, thanks. Yes, Mr. McWilliam.
Just a reminder to all the board members in case they forgot. We did receive a, sort of conceptual plan that outlines some of the other potential projects that we'll be looking at. That was received at the July third planning board meeting. So if you have that document or need a copy, perhaps it's available. Anybody wants to see it, the bigger picture, I think it's outlined in this document.
On the website.
It would be in the agenda center as well. All right. Any other questions for staff? Well, what is the pleasure of the board? Jose? Oh, no. Yes, come on up.
Just one point of clarification that may help a little bit. The reason that we filed two applications on this is that this falls on lot ten, there are two separate lots. This is on lot ten. The next application is on lot five. So rather than trying to make confusing commingled, the application between two lots. We elected split them in the scene to be a very logical split point.
Okay, thank you. Right, it's nine forty. What is the?
William Ryder, I live across the street. I'm not, not in a butter.
We already closed the public hearing.
So you won't take my question or?
Well, go ahead.
Please, thank you. So I'd like to know how today they started ripping down the building with no silt fence or erosion control setup. I'd love to know if we could maybe find that out.
Okay. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
A little concerned with the future project. Being twenty feet higher than the existing building. So I would rather see these two new buildings bigger. And the buildings that are up against Endicott Street be a little smaller. So they are working together. That's the only issue I see. They're making a big investment here, great improvement. I'm sure spending millions of dollars still. But. Up against Endicott Street. I'd rather give them a variance and make these buildings bigger. Let them get a little closer to the property line. Let it be a little bit taller. Let these buildings be a little bit smaller. So they are working together. And I kind of wonder why we're splitting them. You know, a shirt or two of them lots, but last July was all one plan and tonight it's two different plans. You know, I hate to think that there's something, sneaking something in the back door, but. You have to wonder.
No, Michael, they can't be sneaking anything in the back door because if we approve this, we can disapprove the other one. This is on the other side of the property. It's kind of stand alone. It's kind of like we can't judge one application by what the builder did, an application years ago. And just to point out, not that it makes it a difference, maybe you're not. But the one concession they made for the taller buildings is instead of lining the channel. They're turning them perpendicular. So instead of a wall of five foot tall people in front of you. You have a couple of six foot tall people standing inside. You have a couple of six-foot-tall people standing sideways with room in between them, so you.
But the only view is the other building across Spirit's Camps or.
We're up, we're up above the trees or the drive-in or whatever's up above that. But you can see from the boat going past, if you have a line of buildings and you're passing on a boat, all you see is that line of buildings. That's just my idea.
But the view is just this building sideways on the other side of where's channel?
That's for the next application.
Channel lane, I'm sorry. Yes.
If I may speak to clarify that bit.
Sure.
Part of the. Thoroughness of the next application will be building, design, heights, solar studies, view studies. There'll be a lot of information for the board and the public to digest in terms of the steps that are taken for that. We didn't want to get into, we frankly thought it was too much information to deal with at this time, and we're still working on those bits. So that's why this application was submitted the way that it was, because it simply wanted to link that for now that's of a of a standard height. And we're trying to better the the condition that's there, but just to set the board's mind at ease, there'll be quite a thorough amount of information. In terms of what's going on on the other parcel.
Okay, thanks. Dean, the 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 building that came down, they had a demolition permit for that, right?
Yes.
As part of that process, do they require that there be erosion control measures?
I agree, there should have been.
Okay, so they weren't done today when they tore the building down, is that?
I don't, I don't know.
Is that an enforcement issue?
Yes.
Okay. So perhaps we will look into that. Young man's comment was on point.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, to to Mr. Vakia's comment, I which I I understand. But you also got to keep in mind that those buildings on the other side of Channel Lane back up against somebody else's property. And I can assure you that those people are very interested in what's going on. As well, and to make those buildings taller makes their task that much harder as as well. I mean, it's it's like squeezing a balloon, you know, you squeeze it here, it's gonna pop out over there. And and that's, you know, it's it's when you're dealing with congested. Completely developed properties such as we have here. It's difficult to. Satisfy, you know, all all lots.
Yep. So, yes, Stacey.
To hear that there is no erosion control kind of really makes me nervous now about the upgrade in drainage.
We made inquiries on an erosion control and we're told that it was not necessary. If it's felt by the board, we can reopen that inquiry first thing tomorrow morning and get erosion control installed.
Who told you it wasn't?
The through the demolition contractor, I asked them if we needed a SWIP and B in an erosion control. The the point here is the reason for not having the erosion control and the argument was that the foundation of the structure is being left in place. There is no impervious surfaces exposed. It's no different, in fact, it's less impactful than the current shedding of water coming off the roof and hitting the. Embankment, the embankment. So that was the the rationale that I was told for why the erosion control wasn't needed. But again, we can open that discussion first thing tomorrow morning and address it immediately and report back to the planning department.
Okay.
Okay.
And it was just, is this? The safety drain, is that set in stone or are you guys open to looking at other?
We're open to looking.
Options, okay.
Absolutely, and we certainly can bring the design in, show you what show.
Because I know you said that it was trace amounts of oil, but that's just off of one, the trace amounts add up.
Sure.
After frequent.
Listen, we're we're open to doing the right, we want to do the right thing here. And if looking at a different mechanism for that safety drain is the right thing to do, we're happy to do so. You know, we'll look at other. Means to ensure that that drain is over, you know, I think, just thinking off my top of my head, we put an interlock between the safety drain and the water. That supplies the boat wash. So if that drain isn't engaged into its position, proper position, the water can't come on.
Got you, okay.
Something along those lines, we're happy to do.
Okay, great.
I do seriously take the erosion control issue, we did look at it and we were told through the demo contractor. Who he was supposed to have done his due diligence, because it's a slab foundation and we are leaving it in place, it wasn't necessary. But we we I will go back to that tomorrow morning first thing and I will report back to planning staff on what my findings are.
Okay, awesome.
Comment on the plan that you're looking at tonight, there is an erosion control plan for that. Stone burns around all the existing catch basins. And there's a small swale along the southern side of the new structure and that has.
Thank you. I just have a quick question to address some of the public safety concerns and some of the pictures that I saw. Is there not a requirement when you're moving a boat on a forklift that you have a ground guide?
There is a, I don't know that there's a requirement. The ownership has put that in place. Up until some of these things became eliminated to us. I don't know how, I can't stand here and tell you it was strictly enforced. I can tell you from the point now, two weeks ago forward. It's going to be, it will be strictly enforced, there will be a spotter going with the for truck as it goes down the road.
Okay, because I was just wondering, because I knew someone that had worked at one of the marinas. And they said they did that all the time, but a few of the pictures that I saw, it's got a forklift with a boat on it going down the road. And no one out guiding it or anything.
I again, I I would be. It'd be disingenuous to say that I know that it is being done, I can tell you, I've had very, very aggressive conversations with the ownership that that must be done. And it has to be read into their procedures.
Thank you. All right. What shall we do, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for PL two zero two one dash zero one one three SP eighteen Endicott Street North. To approve the application, not taking into consideration any future plans that may or may not come to fruition. But also recognizing that we acknowledge the change in the initial thing, that they will not be. Reassembling an old building that was taken apart that because of financial reasons, it's more. Responsible to do new construction for that. Right, which staff has pointed out makes it more conforming, actually. Is there a second to Mr. Bellbo's motion?
It's just the application, the waiver.
We even discussed the the lighting, so it would have no matter.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we never even talked about the waivers.
I I will say that. The landscaping and lighting plan will be part of the next plan.
There was, there was a comment in there as far as the landscaping goes, that none of the impervious. Areas are really going to be affected, so nothing as far as green space actually changes. I think I saw a figure here, it was was eighty-four percent impervious and it stays at eighty-four percent. And that's why they were requesting the waiver on that, I saw that somewhere. But anyway, we can, we can, we can vote on the motion to approve it. And then talk about the waivers, correct?
Sure.
All right, demanding the the motion that's that is pending is to approve PL twenty twenty-one dash zero one one three SP. Everyone clear on that? Not it's separate, the waiver is going to be a separate motion. All those in favor signify by raising their hands. Oh, we, didn't we have a second? I'm sorry.
No, but I will.
Second by the chief, okay, any further discussion? All right, then all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Anyone opposed? And the motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would it be possible to have a count of the vote? So I I just, it seems like we used to do that and I always said, so we would say five, four, three against or.
It's just my policy not to do that unless it's relevant, so if it's a tie, then, you know, if it's extremely close.
Okay.
But I I'll try to remember to six, three is the is the current.
I just think it's good for the public too to know that, that.
Okay. Thank you for that suggestion.
Just a suggestion.
So what of the waiver? This is a waiver of the the landscape and and the lighting plan. Which you're representing will be part of the next application or the the other application.
We we have, we have talked to them about what lighting they're going to be putting on building eleven and twelve. And it's all minimal lighting on the side of the building that. Goes down.
So what do they need a waiver for?
That we don't have a actual plan of. The foot candle.
Oh, I see.
Parade that we sometimes see. And we don't have a landscape plan because. Quite frankly, there's no landscaping there now and.
But the next, the next phase, they will have to have a landscaping plan and a lighting.
Right for their, right.
Okay.
But but so that.
Sure.
So Dean, and I'm sure they've got this figured out, but the lights there wouldn't interfere with the driving theater at night, right? Okay.
Everything is downcast.
Okay, thank you.
But my only concern with that is they talked about now, they split the two lots for one permit and another permit. So. This waiver would have affected this one lot, so the the next one is going to cover the lot on the other side of the road. The other side of Channel Marine.
Yes.
Or to the channel.
Yeah, let me, let me restate that, there there. There's very little opportunity for landscaping under this plan.
On that side.
Yes, so that's why I wasn't worried about it.
Okay.
It is very minimal lighting proposed on this plan. The. Future plan is much more extensive and they are planning. Landscaping and there is a need for a lighting plan. For that. For that, but for for the side of the. Of the railroad track that we're talking about tonight. There is. Virtually no opportunity for landscaping improvement.
So I just wanted to point out on their thing here, it says the affected work area for this application is on existing impervious areas. And that's why they're asking for the waiver there, because like Dean said, there is no landscaping, it's impervious, it stays impervious. And for the lighting, it just says no exterior lighting is proposed other than security lighting. That is covered by an exemption under six point six point five VI dash F. So that's the legal terms. Was that a different app? No, that's this application.
But okay.
So what shall we do with waiver request? So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve these two waivers, they seem pretty. Pretty self-explanatory. Yeah, so I'm gonna say that we approve them. We have a motion for Mr. Bellbo's, there a second?
Second.
Second by Chief Biati, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising their hand, those opposed? Okay, what was the count?
You didn't vote.
Okay, so.
Do that again.
Everybody. Six. Six in favor.
I'm not voter tonight because I my late arrival. I'd like to steal an alternate.
He was already.
He arrived, I think.
We were, we told him the second you walked through the door, he ceased to exist. Awards to that effect, right? Yeah.
So how you voting, Mike?
Well, I I think we should have a plan.
So you would say no.
Correct.
So that would mean that it would be six in favor and one opposed and one abstention?
Yeah.
Then we're missing somebody.
Who was opposed?
It has a.
Six plus one plus one.
I'm opposed.
Mike's the only one opposed and one abstained.
I'm used to it.
And we're used to it too, Michael. All right. So that's the, that's it for that one, thank you very much. Is there any new business? I'm grateful for this. Old business. Waiver request for up to eighty percent, the impact fee at fifty Church Street, refill and reuse. I remember this, okay, so this is the old school building. Corner of Messer.
The applicant is here.
The applicant is here, he's been very patient.
Way past his bedtime, I hear.
Ah, yeah.
Chairman, board members, for the record, my name is Kevin Morissette, I'm now the owner of Fifty Church Street.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and we're asking for the impact fee waivers to be lowered down through the formula that they have.
Similar to the action we took earlier, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions? Yes.
Tell me what the impact fee is.
I think I'll let staff.
The. The impact fee, in this case, it's. Because they're converting from one use to another use.
I'm just asking the dollar amount.
Oh, it's.
But you guys are changing it.
It's it's gonna go from.
What are you trying to frighten me?
The next meeting.
Gotta go from approximately, don't quote me on these numbers, but approximately sixteen hundred a unit to. Whatever twenty percent of that, three hundred and twenty dollars.
For a set number of years.
No, 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 one one-time charge.
One time.
One-time charge.
Yeah.
So he bought the building for a dollar. And we're gonna cut the sixteen hundred dollar impact fee.
Because he qualifies for. Yes, but he's also going to.
Same thing we did with the Colonial earlier.
Taxable.
I mean, I bought it for a dollar and you guys have already gotten thirteen hundred dollars in taxes.
Perfect.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the impact fees are actually under a normal new development. Fees that would cover services done by employees of the cities to prepare. Were the application and the development coordination and meetings and stuff like that. But because this is being built in an existing building and converted. That's why we're allowed to give waivers, no, yes, no?
We're, the impact fees are to. For a new use to pay into the various funds. School, et cetera, for existing facilities, because then in theory, they're going to be adding to the demand of those facilities. To help pay for the embedded base. Under the, so in this case, we're going from a school. To residence, so it's a complete change of use. So they would be paying the multifamily. Per unit rate, and I forget exactly what it is, seventeen, seventeen forty is the normal rate per unit. Per unit rate, and I have to get exactly what it is. Seventeen, seventeen forty is the normal rate per unit, so be. Twelve, twelve times seventeen hundred as opposed to. Three hundred and fifty times twelve.
Right. That was a good explanation.
Thought we came up with a plan last month that we're gonna do fifty percent and go up every year, fifty percent.
That has to be approved by the council.
City Council has not acted on that.
And we're digging our heels in.
That's why Mr. Morissette's here asking. Before that gets approved.
Got it.
Okay, but I, but I will note, just for complete transparency here. If the city council does increase them. The, the impact fees are assessed at time of certificate of occupancy. So if the certificate of occupancy is, is after the increase. You will pay the eighty percent of whatever the new fee is, not necessarily of what the fee is today.
No, the twenty percent.
But he'll be the twenty percent, yes, sorry, yes.
Okay.
The old eighty, twenty rule.
Yeah, there, any other questions for staff or anything else? But it's the pleasure of the board.
I make a motion to.
Stacy.
To accept that.
Approve or accept? Very good.
Approve.
Approve it, sorry, thank you.
I turned into a pumpkin in about ten minutes.
All right.
I would make a motion to approve the waiver request.
You have a motion by Mr. Saints here, is there?
At Fifty Church Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify your approval by raising your hand. Opposed? Unanimous?
Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, Mike, it doesn't matter.
I was one.
For the record.
I was one.
Representative.
Thank you.
What shall we put you down? He's abstaining. No, you can't. Build your house. All right, planning department, do you have any report for us?
I will take a pass tonight, given the, the latest of the hour and the threat of bodily injury.
Anybody have a burning desire to do the, a liaison report?
Well, we got.
All right. So what is this conceptual review for redeveloping thirty-five to seventy-one and Winnisquam Avenue all about?
Good evening, my name is Erin Lambert. I'm with Wilcox and Barton. I'm a civil engineer on behalf of Naughty Marina. I have the owners of Naughty Marina here with me also, Chris and Jen Bouchard. So you should have the conceptual plans in your packet. I'm gonna basically walk you through our proposal. They own three properties along Winnisquam Ave that also front on the Winnipesaukee River. Right before it outlets into Lake Winnisquam. So the three properties that would be part of this redevelopment are thirty-five, fifty-three, and seventy-one Winnipesaukee Avenue.
Winnisquam.
Winnisquam, excuse me, Winnisquam Avenue on the Winnipesaukee River. They total approximately point three five acres based on the survey we got. The tax records reflect slightly larger total area and we're working to reconcile that. But in general, it is about a third of an acre over the three properties. It's located in the urban commercial zone. The uses of the property will be a marina, a restaurant, as well as continuing the residential use is located on the western end of the property. And we are proposing to redevelop the site, requesting a conditional use permit from you to utilize the performance overlay district. It is a tight spot, there's limited land use area. But the Bouchards have a very exciting and ambitious proposal to revitalize this area. So if you're familiar with the area, the building that's sort of at the heart of this marina is the former bait shop. And they wanna convert that into a restaurant. So I understand that would be the first restaurant on Lake Winnisquam.
Will they serve fried smelt?
I can't answer that.
Are there any smelt left?
I'll put it on my list, yes.
Naughty, Naughty Marina.
Naughty Marina.
Naughty Marina.
Yep, thirty-five, fifty-three, and seventy-one. And so the goal is to take a couple of the boat slips and dedicate those to temporary parking. So that guests can come and park and go to the restaurant. In addition, they are going to rebuild the entire seawall. Right now, the retaining wall along the property is in pretty tough shape. And they have an ambitious goal of rebuilding the entire seawall. So at the west end of the property, there's two residences. One of them has already been renovated, is gonna stay as is. It's a beautiful three, two-story, three-story? Two-story building. There's a small cottage, which is the westernmost building, and that needs to be raised. In order for us to get equipment out to rebuild the seawall. So the proposal is for that building to come down and be rebuilt on the same footprint. But in lieu of the current one story, they wanna go to three, two or three stories. The goal would be to provide a spot for one Carter Park under the building, which is similar to what they have for the existing two-story building. So these are rental units and it's, it's important for us to have adequate parking for those. In addition, they are looking to rebuild, relocate and rebuild the boathouses. So as you can imagine, we would be doing a. A parallel permitting process with New Hampshire D E S. We've been talking to them preliminarily. We have another meeting with them on Thursday as a follow-up to this meeting. So we would be looking to obtain a New Hampshire D E S shoreline permit as well as New Hampshire D E S wetland permits. That's how we permit the docks in the state. So they would be responsible for approving the new seawall and the boathouses and the, the rebuilding of all of those boat slips. So a couple of things to share in addition to the new boathouses. So the restaurant, we are looking to maintain the footprint over the water and add on to it on land. And the reason for that is that area would be where we would, we would place the kitchen and the bathrooms for the restaurant. In addition, they're looking to add a second story. So that's how we arrive at the square footage that would be required for the C U P in order to permit us to apply for. Reason, or excuse me, redevelopment or the performance overlay zoning district. In addition to the, the boat slips, the last one on the east end is currently dedicated to marine patrol. They have a boat slip and a parking space and that will continue even with the redevelopment of the project. The other thing that we are looking at, so between the restaurant, the marina, and the two residences, the project would require a hundred and five parking spaces. At this time, that's not something we're looking for relief from. We understand that in order to provide adequate parking for the marina as well as the restaurant, we need to provide that parking. So we have two plans for how to provide as much parking as we can on the Naughty Marina site. And then the owner is exploring alternatives for securing off-site parking directly across the street. Where we could provide crosswalks to safely bring people across Winnisquam Ave to either their boathouse or to the restaurant. Boat ramp. The boat ramp is gonna get rebuilt, but it is going to stay. And in addition, we're going to build a vault so that somebody could come and launch boats using a forklift. It doesn't currently have that opportunity today, but that will be built when they redo. The seawall, they will build in a forklift well.
Any plans to have a boat storage construction across the street?
That's not part of this project, no, no. They just own these three properties and are looking at the marina and the restaurant and the, and the.
Oh, I understand, this is the conceptual, I'm just, we, we've had, this isn't the first plan for this that we've seen. So there was a, a proposal to have exactly that across the street. Which would have been, I think, a bit of a traffic problem.
There was a boat storage building right across the street, just constructed.
It got approved, okay.
You heard that, boat storage place where it was.
Yeah. Yeah, good point there, Charlie. Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
I wanna make two statements. One, I wanna thank them for what they've done to that property so far.
Yep.
I, I mean, it, it, thank you for. Put in. The other comment I'd make, Mr. Chairman, is unfortunately, they're not the first restaurant. There used to be one at the Winnisquam Bridge. The old mosquito bridge back in nineteen sixty-eight. I'm old enough to know that, nobody else here.
I ate their part meat.
I'm sorry, he's older than me. Anyways.
Appreciate that.
And thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's thrilling, thrilling, actually.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Is the, the new boathouses are gonna be built over the slips? Are there? Is there residencies or, or cabanas or what, what?
No, no, the plan is the area is gonna be on the first floor, it's the, it's the boat slip. The enclosed boat slip, and on the top, we are hoping to do a flat roof so we can put storage up there cuz there's very limited room. We're gonna be required to replicate the boathouses in their current size, so we're hoping for a flat second roof for storage for boating-related accessories and whatnot.
Okay, so there's no residences or?
There's no residences, no, just solely the two on the west end. Not in the boathouses, they will strictly be for, for boating and storage of boating-related items.
How far out into the current street or parking area there in front of the bait shop is that building actually proposed to go well?
Yeah, so that we are looking to have it be, we're looking at the travel lane and we talked about wanting to leave enough room for a sidewalk. So we're still developing that, but that would be the idea would be that we would have the, the travel way as required by the city of La Cona Road standards and leave room for a five-foot wide sidewalk. Before we get to the building. So that's one of the items, that front setback that we would be likely looking for relief through the C U P for the performance zoning.
Cuz I know that, that street is kind of wide open back there.
It is, that's why we're hoping that some of the things we're proposing will provide a little bit more clarity and make that safer. So whether it means, you know, either having a sidewalk with curb or, or. Yeah, something to differentiate. We wanna make sure as we're bringing our customers and our, our boat owners across the street that we're bringing them to a safe location where they can either get to the restaurant, to the dock, or to their boathouse.
Any future plan for a drive-up window for the boats on the water side? Just think about it, you're right across from the boat launch. And if you do, and you have people coming to get something to eat and people trying to get their boats in and stuff, that's, might create a little traffic issue. In there. And my last comment, the, the one residence that's staying, that's the treehouse on the end of the street, right? That the neighbors across the street had a heart attack about. Cuz it took their view away. And now you're gonna build another one next to it. Okay, that's.
It sounded like.
There was more comments.
Tune in for more details later. Any other questions or comments?
What's the goal? If you had a magic crystal ball and could pick one, you'd like to start this project besides tomorrow, you know, what is the?
Chris has the, the seawall lined up.
That's, I knew that answer was coming, that's why.
Yes, the seawall lined up where, you know, we're getting pricing on the cofferdams, we're taking care of all those steps. I think realistically, you know, we're gonna have to get through both the, the city as well as the state, so. Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, that's permitting nightmare.
Yeah, we're really excited for all the pieces and we're gonna fight really hard to make sure that we can do all of them right. So I know in the packet, if you didn't have a chance to. There's some renderings of what, you know, the boathouses will look like. We're really excited and we wanna get it all pulled together into one great project. I don't know.
Get it and release.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yep, yeah.
Are there any, any other business that anyone cares? Oh, we need to take a vote on the conceptual?
Chinese food.
Okay.
Yes, you need to approve, this is the first step for performance zoning, you need to approve.
Just to prove the conceptual, is that what you want for a motion? Make a motion to approve the conceptual.
Motion by the chief, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. St. Clair, anything further? All those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Was it unanimous?
Yes.
It was. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the first.
Unless anybody has any objections, I'd like to declare this meeting adjourned.
What time is your clock say? Ten seventeen.
Ten seventeen.
What was your prediction?
We voted against.